Aloha Pumehanakako. The August, sorry, the September 25th, 2024 Neighborhood Board Number 34 Meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Haleh Community Forum. My name is Anthony Makana Paris and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting and have community members online via WebEx and in person at Kapole Haleh Conference Rooms A and B. Order and decorum. If you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand or in-person hand and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking and introduce yourself and only address your comments to the chair. If I miss any hands in person or online, our trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant Curtis will throw a pen at me or a marker and point out who I need to call on. Those giving reports this evening may take up to 10 minutes. Presentation materials have been distributed in the online cloud drive. So you can access them there. Please remember to silence any and all electronic devices and keep yourself muted when not talking on WebEx. Again, please remember to state your name for the record before sharing your comment, question, or testimony at any part during the meeting. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate the agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. And let's honor each other by keeping to the allotted times for speaking and collectively finish on time. Are there any procedural questions before the roll call? Seeing or hearing none, may I ask you to call the roll, please?
Bosler. Member Bosler? Absent. Member Dudley?
Aye.
Aye. Herr? Absent. Kehle?
No.
Huh?
Aye.
Kehle?
Excellent. Thank you. Let's begin with our city monthly reports. And Honolulu Fire Department just took off to an emergency. So we'll go straight to Honolulu Police Department.
Hello, I'm the Chair, Board Members, Members of the Community, Corporal Pagan, Honolulu Police Department, District Unit Community Policing. Here with me tonight is Lieutenant Carrera, as well as Sergeant Moroka. Hope you all are doing okay. I do have your stats for August. In August, we had 32 motor vehicle thefts, 12 in our area, 17 burglaries, 4 in our area, 130 thefts, 52 in our area, 42 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, 17 in our area. There's a total of 6,935 calls for service, 2,196 in our area. The only thing I did want to mention, I bring up was that on Saturday, we're going to be doing a community graffiti paintout with some of our neighborhood security watch members at the bridge by Kapole Middle School and Kamakana Lee. The graffiti there, maybe painting on the top there. We're fortunate enough to get paint from the city. We're going to get some supplies from Weeds in Seattle, Hawaii. And I believe then Esteban is going to be coming out and taking care of the painting. And DR Horton has is providing food for the volunteers that are coming up. At this time, I believe we have enough volunteers. It's not a very big project, so we're going to be doing that. Other than that, I am open for any comments, concerns, or questions.
Aloha for the report. Are there any questions, comments from the board? Chair recognizes Board Member Moon Kahle.
Corporal Pagan, thank you for a thorough report. As usual, you guys are doing a good job. Question? It was brought to my attention by our neighborhood's security watch. She made mention to me that they received a grant from OHA. And with that said, part of the grant is safety and security training and various items that I was concerned about. Are you aware of the grant and what type of training that the Neighborhood Security Watch will be required to do? And if so, are the trainers certified to give, you know, like active shooter training and stuff like that? Thank you.
Thank you. I am not aware of the grant. I'm not sure what they're going to be using it for. I believe that the training that they get, there's a set training that we do in regards to what a neighborhood security watch that's affiliated with the Honolulu Police Department, their responsibilities and guidelines. So we do talk to them about staying within those parameters. I believe that one of the neighborhood security watches in the past, they've actually had a gentleman that sells the burner guns, that pellet guns, illegal pellet guns, and they did training with them. We did not participate because we did not advocate taking weapons out when we do our neighborhood security watches. We are non-confrontational. So that's something we've talked to them about. I'm not sure. I know they had another trainer come out at one of our neighborhood security watches. They've done like CPR training and stuff like that. So those, when they, when they bring those people out, it's basically people that they're bringing out that it's not through HPD. So it's not training that we give. It might be just general training and safety things that they teach their members in their community.
Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes First Vice Chair Mikiela Lindstone.
Mahalo Nui Corporal Pagan. I just wanted to support, or I think it's like a workday this Saturday. And just to share with the community that I believe this is to remedy the graffiti that's between Kamakana Lee and Kapole Middle School. And there's been a lot of community concern on that. So if you, just if you're wondering what Saturday is about, I believe it's about that. And just thank you to HPD for supporting that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Seeing none, any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Okay, with that, thank you very much for the presentation and best of luck with the project this Saturday.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Good evening.
Moving now to the Board of Water Supply.
Aloha Chair, Board, residents, and guests. Nikki Rogel from Board of Water Supply. I don't have much for my report. Just to announce that this Saturday is busy for Kapole. It's also our Imagine a Day Without Water event. I brought flyers last month as well. But we invite everybody to come out. It's going to be at Kapole Regional Park from 10 to 2. We'll have plenty of city, state, and community organizations helping us out with different activities. We hope to sorry. We hope to share about the value of water and the impacts of climate change today and in the future. We'll have crafts and workshops and food trucks. We'll have meals Hawaiian food and tropical wine. So emission is free. So on the flyer, there is a map. As we were to go, any questions or concerns, I'm happy to take back.
Any questions, concerns from the board members? Any questions, concerns, or comments from the community at large? Seeing none, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now let's get to Director Keith Suzuka. Are you with us for Mayor Eric Bongiardi?
Hello. Hi. Can you hear me?
Aloha. Yes.
Aloha. Hi, Keith Suzuka, Deputy Director, Department of Land Management, Mayor's Representative to the Kapole Makakilo Neighborhood Board. Good evening, everyone. I guess my first thing that I wanted to report is the Skyline Ridership data for last month, August. And it was up a bit, 94,106 riders in the month of August. That compares to 89,986 in the month of July. Then getting to the things that I was tasked with trying to find, get responses and answers to. The first one is an embarrassment. I, it's the third month that we've been trying to get you folks answers to the question about the Department of Parks and Recreation's acceptance of 400 acres of land from the Navy in Kalailoa. And I got absolutely no responses this time. I received the report this morning, got no responses, wrote to the Director of the Department of Parks and Recs and asked for a personal report. But because I just sent it today, I did not receive anything. So unfortunately, I will have to come back to you folks next month, hopefully with a satisfactory response to the questions that were asked about the Kalailoa land acceptance by the city. Other than that, after I went offline last month, there were a whole bunch of questions that were asked. I apologize for not having stuck around. But let me give you the questions and give you the responses. The first question was to the Kapole City Lights. And it was a request by a resident to ask if live streaming the Kapole City Lights opening night on Saturday, November 30th, from 5 to 9, if that was possible. And DPR is requesting additional time for that response. The next question was posed to the Department of Permitting and Planning, DPP, and it related to the Makakilo Quarry. The question was, what can the city do to address concerns about air pollution, i.e. dust, noise, and truck activity from the Makakilo Quarry that received a 15-year extension to operate until 2047? DPP's response is as follows. Grace Pacific, the operator of the Makakilo Quarry, currently employs several mitigative measures to control dust, noise, and truck activity. Standard practices include frequent sprinkling of water over active work areas and temporary halting of quarry operations during strong windy periods. Dust studies for the upper quarry have been repeatedly shown that fugitive dust has been adequately controlled. Noise and traffic assessments have shown no significant impacts. With the recent amendment of their special use permit to expand operations to the year 2047, Grace Pacific is committed to continuing these practices. The city and county of Honolulu monitors these efforts through annual reports filed with the city and the state Land Use Commission. In addition, the community is welcome to call the Makakilo Quarry Community Hotline at 808-671-GRACE. And that's 671-4722. Or by email, makakilokuary@grecespacific.com regarding any concerns. The next set of questions were posed to DTS and they related to the Skyline Station escalators. First question was, can Skyline Station escalators at West Oahu stations with only one escalator on each side of the train platform, including Keanei Station, go upward to the train platform throughout the morning? Number two, can Skyline Station escalators at Halava Station go downward to the street level throughout the morning because most Skyline passengers are commuting to downtown Honolulu? Escalators often crowded during the morning commute because Skyline Station escalators at West Oahu stations go downward to the street level. Most Skyline passengers are commuting from Eva to town in the morning and town to Eva in the afternoon. DTS's response is as follows. Number one, station escalators will be set to upward direction in the AM to accommodate passenger flow from the ground level to the platform level at all stations with the exception of the Halava Station, where the escalators will travel in the down direction, leading passengers from the platform to the ground level. Escalator directions will be reversed during PM commute. Number two, this change should alleviate the overcrowding conditions at Halava Station elevator. And we will continue to monitor both station staff and security team to advise passengers of directions of escalators as they sweep the train at the Ternimus Station. Next question, again for DTS, related to restroom access at the Skyline Stations. The question being, why do Skyline passengers have to ask the station manager to use the restroom at Skyline Stations? Would DTS be willing to allow Skyline passengers to use the restroom at Skyline Stations without asking the station manager? The response is, and please see item six, and I'm going to get to item six now. The item six was a joint response from DTS and HART. The question posed to them is, will there be large, open restrooms at future Skyline Stations, i.e. Bakalapa to City Center? I'm sorry, Civil Cent, Civic Center. The response is as follows. Restrooms at all stations, current and future, are reserved for urgent situations and can be accessed with the assistance of a station operator. This decision aligns with practices across many transit systems nationwide. Unlocked and open public restrooms often become targets for illicit activities and incur damage from vandalism, misuse, and illegal activities, creating unsafe environments. Most of North America's light rail and metro networks in cities like Vancouver, Seattle, Portland, Los Angeles, San Diego, Phoenix, Salt Lake City, and Minneapolis generally do not have restrooms available at stations. Other destinations, including restaurants, offices, and school campuses have increased secured access to restrooms for the safety and comfort of all users of all ages and abilities. Skyline Stations were designed to require secured access, similar to many restaurants and other businesses. That's the end of my report on the responses from the city. I stand available to answer any questions.
Aloha for the report back. Good job on your homework.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions, concerns, follow-up from board members? Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair Dr. Kiony Dudley.
Okay. I just, I just want to comment that in spite of the fact that there are many cities that don't have open in their skylines, we should. I mean, you know, it's a basic. And here in Hawaii, we have restrooms in stores. We have restrooms in service stations. We have restrooms in we should have restrooms in Skyline Stations. And I just, I think it's a great, great, great disappointment, one of many that HART has given us. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments from the board? Seeing none, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the report back from the mayor's office from the community at large? With that, thank you very much, Director Suzuka, and best of luck on securing the other answers requested.
Thank you very much. I hope to have some acceptable answers for you next month. Thank you.
Now we'd like to invite our council member Andrea Cipolla. Report.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair and Board Members. So I passed out four different items for you guys tonight. One of them is the spade and neuter bill, Bill 41. We just had it for our third reading today in committee. Specifically, it's about changing the reimbursement rates for the Humane Society contract instead of codifying in law, allowing them to set it administratively. The rates right now for the contract with the city and Humane Society are very outdated. I think we reimburse like $40 if they do spade and neuter for felines and 50 for male cats. So long story short, you know, over time prices change. We want to put it in admin rules and have the contract be a little bit more reasonable, especially for the amount of animal outreach that we need. And of course, because the spade and neuter is a lot more expensive than $40 or $50. So that's one. The second handout that I gave you was my statement on communal living projects. As you know, the state is pursuing quite a few of these. And we have some, I mean, we have like maybe four or five in YNI that I'm supporting or helping. So that's just my statement on the projects in general and the future of any other projects. And then the third handout, I believe, is hold on, let me think of what I just gave you. I want to say it's the amendments to Bill 64. So Bill 64 is our land use ordinance overhaul bill. And specifically, I submitted amendments for the agricultural section because a huge amount of the changes for the agricultural section will affect farmers and ranchers and as well our feed store in YNI. So you can look through that. I mean, that's definitely something that a lot of people in the community have been attending. I've been having working groups to work on the suggestions for Bill 64. And I believe there's one more handout, but I can't remember what it is exactly. Oh, why in the world did I forget that? Makana, look at me. This is what it's about. Okay, so I did submit a resolution that they should reconvene the landfill advisory commission or committee. This is my reason. And whether or not the administration thinks it's a good reason, I have no idea. They are supposed to do a site selection by the end of this year. I'm not too sure what will happen with that. But I also think like not being able to have public meetings about the process itself or like where we're going with the process is not advantageous. Because say we come up in December and then we get the announcement that they don't have a site. Then what happens? You know, so I'm not saying they don't have a site. I'm just saying to reconvene the committee is not a big deal. And can I also say that this summer I went to a place in Fujian, China called Ho Mialing Waste Treatment Plant, and they stopped doing landfills in 2009. No landfills in their whole city. They have 3 million people. They have four byproducts that they create from the waste. One is fertilizer, two is biomass, three is energy, and four, they create 30,000 bricks a day to build houses there. No landfills. In fact, the place is so clean that people take pictures at the waste treatment plant. It's crazy for their wedding. So I just think that above the whole, should we talk about a site for the landfill? We should talk about whether or not our technology is really just outdated and we stop looking for landfill sites. We are an island. In fact, the people in China asked me that. They said, why are you guys making landfills in Hawaii? You don't have that much land. You guys shouldn't do that. Great, awesome. Tell us how. So we did talk about the technology, the things that they do, and how they kind of changed and pivoted away from that. So long story short, that's the fourth handout, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, council member. Questions first from Second Vice Chair Dr. Kiony Dudley.
Two.
I just want to say thank you for the landfill efforts. I just agree, I agree totally that, you know, we don't need landfills. We could, we could really take care of all of our stuff. We could turn it into bricks for houses. Now that we're going to have hurricanes coming at us, they're going to be category five and super cat fives and so forth with the 200 mile an hour winds. We need houses with bricks. That's a really good idea. So keep pushing. You're doing a great job. Keep it up. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? First Vice Chair, Mikiela Lindstone.
I feel like in the beginning, there was community, you know, it was open to community discussion on landfills, and then it just closed. So thank you for bringing that up because I was thinking that too. I'm like, the landfill issue hasn't been reaching out to the community as much as it was in the very beginning. So yeah, mahalo.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think right now the administration said they're looking, maybe federal, maybe this, but the fact that we don't really know the process or that we could be surprised at the end of what happens, I don't think that's, you know, what we should do, so.
Chair recognizes Board Member Moon Kahle.
Real quick, Representative, thank you for your personal connection with Mrs. Borges and her efforts, you know, in the area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now opening up for any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large. The four items. Seeing none, at this time, the Chair would recommend that we actually support both Bill 41 2024 and Resolution 24221. Lines with resolutions already passed by our board. So may I have a motion to support both at this time? Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair moves. Is there a second? Okay, so.
I'll second.
So it was moved by the Second Vice Chair and seconded by the First Vice Chair. Okay, very good.
Thank you. If we could get that written, then at least when we hear the bills, I could say that you guys are in support.
Absolutely. So at this time, because these are items before us, is there any public testimony? And this is on reconvening the landfill advisory committee solution and giving the administration more latitude on paying for speeding and neutering cats and dogs? Going once for testimony, going twice for testimony, going three times for testimony. Okay, I think everybody's on the same page.
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
We will do this by affirmation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aole. Any kanaluwa, anyone abstaining? Hearing none, the Chair calls it unanimous. Very good. And for the other one, we will try to agendize because it's a bit more detailed on the recommendations for amendments for the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Awesome work. Now let's go to Uncle Frank Ginalio and the report from Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yes, at September Citizen Advisory Committee meeting, we learned that the overall work program, or OWP, for Oahu was approved. Daniel Alexander of the Department of Transportation briefed the Oahu Vision Zero Action Plan. Its overall goal is to use a safe system approach to eliminate traffic-related deaths and injuries on the island. For the past decade, there has been one fatality per week from vehicles, motorcycles, mopeds, bicycles, and pedestrian incidents. 1% of our roadways has accounted for 28% of fatalities. Considerable outreach was done in developing the plan. Individual goals were delineated as safe speeds, safe streets, safe people, safe vehicles, and post-crash care. The plan includes proactive street design, reducing the speed limit to 20 miles per hour on local streets and in school zones, and an adding roadway safety features such as flashing beacons at raised crosswalks. Mr. Alexander noted that 44% of pedestrian fatalities have occurred in crosswalks. To meet the plan's 2040 target will require $44 million to $48 million annually, or $708 million to $755 million total. These funds will come from the Transportation Improvement Program. In response to a suggestion about keeping the 25 miles per hour speed limit, Alexander said that the lower speed is to be set by ordinances. Samantha Lara Avampo then briefed an OWP educational framework for youth engagement in planning. This was started in Waikiki schools to reach into classrooms using a variety of media along with valuable support from teachers. It is to encourage students to, for example, use the bus and also to get involved in transportation planning through a course offered at the University of Aloy, Manoa. through a course offered at the University of Aoi, Manoa campus. I asked about involvement in Kapole and Ms. Laura answered that OMPO would like to include students in our area. The CAC then voted to recommend the program's approval by OMPO's policy board. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Are there any questions, comments, follow-up from fellow board members? Any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large regarding Uncle Frank's OMPO report? Hearing none, thank you, Uncle Frank, for the continued good work, appreciate it. Now we get to the presentations for the evening. We have three. And the first, we would like to invite Hawaiian Electric up to provide an update on the plan for Roosevelt Avenue re-conducting project here in Kapole.
Aloha, Chair Paris, members of the board and members of the community. Thank you for this opportunity to present this evening. My name is Janet Ying and I work at the Transmission and Distribution Division at Hawaiian Electric. And tonight I will be sharing information about a proposed re-conducting project in the Kapole-Kalailoa area.
No worries, everyone. We'll take in a few seconds to figure out how we're going to make sure we can all see the pretty pictures online. No worries, teamwork makes the dream work. So here we're getting technical support. Chair will call for a one-minute recess. Feel free to go use the restroom or take a stretch break while we figure out why it's not actually quite working yet. No worries, you got about thirty more seconds before I'll call everybody back, so. We MacGyver'd it for those that are young enough to know what that means. Okay, so we're going to reconvene. If um, Hawaiian Electric, you're ready? Good to go? Okay, awesome. So take it away.
In order, sorry, in order to support the continued growth and increase demand for power in West Oahu, Hawaiian Electric must replace existing circuits with a higher-capacity conductor that can safely and reliably serve the future increased demand for power. Um, so this map drawing shows a detailed scope of the project, which spans approximately two miles along Roosevelt Avenue between Hawaiian Electric's CEIP substation and Fort Barrett Road. And the red line shows the section of the existing circuit that we will be replacing. We will also replace twenty existing poles and install one new pole as shown by the colored dots. Within the CEIP substation, we will reconfigure the underground circuit and install three new manholes. This area will also incorporate grid hardening features such as replacing expulsion fuses and lightning arresters with fire-safe models. Um, the closest residence to the project is one hundred thirty-five feet from the project location. However, the visual impact to the existing nearby homes should be minimal since there will be no changes to the forty-six KB overhead pole alignment. And the new poles will be in similar height and configuration to the existing pole. The red lines in these photos show the circuit that we are proposing to replace. And these photos are looking southwest and southeast towards Roosevelt Avenue. And these are a few more photos for visual reference heading further along Roosevelt Avenue. And a few more photos showing the circuit.
Aloha, Kakao. My name is Brianna Ackerman and I work in the Community Relations Division at Hawaiian Electric. And um, my role on this project is to make sure that the public stays informed as the project progresses. Um, so if the Public Utilities Commission approves our project, we plan to start construction in January of twenty twenty-six and have the project in service by June of twenty twenty-six in order to meet that increased demand. Um, we have created a project website at hawaiinelectric.com/ceip46reconducting. Um, and as we get more updates, we'll be updating that page and we'll also be sure to keep the board informed. Um, and we'll be happy to take questions this evening, but also wanted to provide our community email, community@hawaiinelectric.com, and our hotline, eight oh eight five four three four zero zero zero, in case anybody has questions that they want to reach out to directly. Um, and if you want to submit any public comments directly to the Public Utilities Commission, those can be emailed to puc@hawaiian.gov. Um, be sure that any of your written statements include the docket reference number, which is um, docket number two zero two three slash zero three four five. And I've also provided, um, we have some flyers here. If anybody would like to take home some flyers that also has our contact information. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mahalo for the presentation and update. Opening to the board members, any questions, comments, or concerns? The chair recognizes board member. Okay, let's go with the second vice chair first and then followed by board member Michael.
Hello? Two. Yes, one, two, three, three, two, one. I don't know how to work the god thing. Okay, um, in the first place, you know, as I testified at the PUC, the west side is always getting dumped on and uh it's, the power lines are ugly. And um, Hawaiian Electric came to this board when they were going to put lines down Farrington. And they actually, they, they, they lied to us, is the real truth. Uh, they, they came to the board, they, they said, yes, so you know, we'd be happy to come back and talk to you and uh would like to keep working on this with you. And the truth of the matter was, the PUC was going to decide within a couple of weeks, you know? And uh, and, and we were left with the idea that it was going to be months and months before the PUC would decide. It just, you know, so we've had bad experience with Hawaiian Electric. We have a resolution, a very strong resolution, saying we don't want any more overhead lines on the west side. And, and that's a board resolution. Why, what's important about that? Neighborhood boards are elected, parts of the government that are elected so that we can meet with the people, hear what the people want, and pass that on to the government. And the government is supposed to listen to us, you know, because we speak for the people. What, what's the problem is right now is that, you know, you're saying um, there's not going to be much difference because the poles are already there. We don't want the poles there. We, we want everything underground. Now, at the PUC meeting, it was stated that the reason that you can't put things underground is because it would cost too much to buy the property. Well, if you've got lines coming down the street on both sides right now, who owns that property? You know, aren't, aren't those poles on your property? Or, or don't you have the access, don't you have the access to the place so that you can do things underground? Um, I, I just think that, you know, you need to rethink the whole project. After the PUC meeting, I took a drive out there. And golly, it, it's not just the lines coming down Roosevelt. Over um, on the right side, as you come down the street uh towards Costco, uh, there, there's a whole bunch of lines coming down uh the area there, kind of covered up by bushes so that you don't see them so much. Why can't the lines be put underground? And you know, it's time to start it. The other thing, the other reason it should go underground is because we have fires caused by electric lines. We're going to have more and more hurricanes. We're going to have more and more winds. We're going to have more and more reason why the things should just be underground. So you know, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to see you guys just go back, start drawing it all over again and put everything you can underground. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Board member Singleton.
Nope, he's, everything he said, I agree with. We're speaking the same language. Overhead is not the answer.
Thank you. Any other question, comments, or concerns from the board? Okay, opening up to the community at large, any question, comments, or? Sure, you can respond, yeah.
Well, I, I did just want to share because I, I believe, Dr. Dudley, you touched upon the regulatory process, the timing of the regulatory process, and then the underground option. So I just wanted to provide you some more information for transparency. Um, we still are in the regulatory process. Um, we are currently responding to supplemental information requests right now. Um, the next step, I believe, is the um, once we finish responding to those information requests, the consumer advocate then provides their statement of position. Um, and then we will have an opportunity to present our statement of position. Um, and then the PUC's decision, decision would follow. So um, there could be a decision by the end of this year, just so that you are aware of the timing. Uh, but there is time to provide um, public comments. So um, you, you can continue or anybody from the public can send their comments in. Um, I do want to share that the underground option, um, when we looked into the underground option, it was not considered a viable option um, simply because um, it did not allow us enough time in order to construct it underground in order to meet um, the forecasted demand. So in order for us to meet that timeline, the overhead route was considered as the viable option. Um, you are right, there are some cost considerations as well. Um, so just for your awareness, if we were to underground all of the circuits that you mentioned, it is about twelve times the cost. Um, I believe it's, it was estimated to be around for uh forty-seven million dollars to do the underground option. So uh, that cost consideration um is definitely something that um, you know, weighs against the, the two options as well. Aloha, Chair.
No problem. Um, we'll go to board member second. Sorry, first vice chair, Mikayala Lindstrom.
Mahalo for that. Um, in case you missed it, uh, we as a neighborhood board believe underground utilities is critical for our community. Um, especially in this quarter when you have Mejana on one side and then you have Kalailoa developing on the other side. So that's families, that's children, that's kupuna. And um, this is one of the hottest areas in the state. Um, it, you know, when you think of infrastructure, um, it ha, it, it really should align with the well-being of the community and that, that we believe as a neighborhood board comes before the cost. And, and, and underground utilities really aligns with the well-being of the community.
Now, let's open up for question, comments, or concerns from the community at large.
So the question was, what was, what is the cost of the overhead option? Um, so the overhead option is three million eight hundred seventeen and seven hundred and four, to be exact. So the overhead option is $3,817,704, to be exact.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Understanding that we have been talking about utilities going underground for three years now. Okay, I'm seeing that. This time, oh. Okay, online, a community member, Ralui Loma. Please go ahead.
Aloha, thank you so much. You said it would cost 47 million. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. 47 million.
Okay, so the cost, according to Josh Green, that told reporters that 12,000 people plus were displaced or 3,000 properties were destroyed, the estimated cost of the overall recovery will ultimately exceed $12 billion. Now, being a member of the community where, like, board member said, this is the hottest part of the island. I mean, at what cost will we have to pay to make our community safe? You know, lives have been lost and there is no dollar amount to replace that. This is just the cost of recovering buildings, roads, shelters, you know, things like that, that can be replaced. The cost of lives to me is priceless. I mean, that's just something to think about when you look at overhead versus underground. Thank you.
All the community member? Any other community members which to provide comments, questions, or concerns at this time? Hearing none. Let me take a moment to go through our positions. So, as eloquently put by Dr. Kionni Dudley, we do have resolutions on this matter. Supporting underground installation of all high voltage transmission lines across neighborhood number 34 district. Also raising concerns regarding the installation of high voltage transmission lines within Ho'opili. And we have a number of resolutions on environmental racism. Now, Hiko just created a plan in order to try to adjust for potential wildfires for a shut-off plan. And a lot of those areas are on leeward sides of the islands, including west sides. Now, the question I have is, are there lines underground? Like other more affluent areas of the islands? Because it would be really helpful if you could show us why some communities have it underground while ours does not. Because as long as I've checked, the PUC makes sure that every repair pays the same. But it seems like our community is being disproportionately targeted for above-ground lines and being, we have to eat the costs, even though we're paying the same as people that have underground 46 kilovolt high voltage lines. So it will be super helpful if you can explain to us whether or not we should expect, if it goes through and there's above-ground lines, that our community now are going to be subject to brownouts as well because of the increased risk of wildfires. We've had them. We still have them right now in our community. And those lines are in the community, not just next to homes, next to hospitals, next to schools, but next to a whole lot of brush, particularly in the development district. Now, I heard an analysis that you gave forward about how you're trying to meet the demand. And I assume the demand is for the thousands of homes that slated to come into West Oahu from the O'Leary project, East Kapole Hawaiian homelands, it was like building out with Rona Village. So we're expecting thousands more families to enter into our community members' area. So in order to meet that demand of future electricity, we're saying we have to jeopardize their future. That's what I'm hearing from Hiko right now. And so eloquently put by our community member online is that, what's the cost going to take? Because is Hiko really looking for another lawsuit because power lines are being attributed to wildfires on the west side of the islands that we know from science that disasters are increasing? So I'll give you a time to respond. And after that, I'm going to ask again the board's permission for me to go on the record again to submit our letter of opposition to docket 2023-35, which is the current one. And we're not saying no to the project, we're just saying, put them underground because you should know better by now. How many poor people have to pass away? Does it have to be in our community that they pass away before we put them on the ground? And mind you, we know it's not you guys that are making these decisions. And we thank you for being here. But at a point where corporate greed and shareholder profits and executive bonuses come before our community's lives is unacceptable. But I hope they give you a bonus for coming and weathering all of this from us. So, yeah, if you would like to respond, please, we would like to hear your thoughts about what we can do to help you help convince Hiko to put them on the ground. Because right now, our community cannot handle the infrastructure. And I'm not sure whether or not our board is going to likely oppose most major developments moving forward simply because the infrastructure we're creating is too shoddy and causing too much risk. And it's not just Hiko. We're dealing with the same thing with the Makahiloja extension. Bahika Road has not actually been put onto Kapole Parkway, which was promised again before. This goes back to what second vice chair, Dr. Kionni Dudley, said, where our communities have been promised things for decades. And on the back end, go back to the regulatory agency for an exemption and no actually have the courtesy of coming before the community to explain to them why. So we have roads that are actually going to nowhere. We have infrastructure that is shoddy and above-ground. And, and our community deserves better. Because under the regulatory agency, we pay the same amount as those that apparently are worth more to the decision-makers at Hiko. So welcome to respond if you'd like. And if not, mahalo nu'u loa for your presentation. We super appreciate you coming out here and sharing us the fact of what's happening and really appreciate the fact that you helped us to recognize that there is still time for the community to comment to the Public Utilities Commission, which is supposed to be protecting the public, making sure equity for repairs, to hear your thoughts as well. Sure, you can come up and share your name.
So my name is Michael Lum. I'm from Hawaiian Electric's Engineering Department. And just to help explain, as you understand the regulatory process and the decisions that I made, that we have to prove certain things to the regulatory body to justify why the project should be viable. But I, what I heard you say at the end is that you're asking Hawaiian Electric to provide, ask for an exception. So I think that's something that we can bring back to our team and see if that's something Hawaiian Electric wants to consider approaching to the PUC for an exemption of the cost of power it takes to fund the project like this.
See, what you just did is like trying to restore goodwill with the community because everybody's shell-shocked by what happened in Lahaina. And our community has been talking about this and we're scared. And it's not the engineer's fault, it's not the community liaison's fault, it's nobody's fault except for the fact that certain decision-makers make certain things happen in such a way that seems like the west side of the islands, the leeward sides, the poorer sides tend to get more shoddy infrastructure than everybody else. We appreciate that, that you go, go back and ask. Super helpful. Yeah, Auntie, what's up?
So if you put these things under the ground, will that happen? Will you, will there be any shutdowns? It's like, she brought up a good point, because I didn't even think about it. If they're above it, they're above ground, then we'll have that shutdown, right? That systematic shutdown that's been kind of been in use? There's certain winds, certain factors.
PSPS, the public safety, shut off.
Exactly. If things are underground, why is your line under that still happen?
Does it still happen to an underground section of line if PSPS needs to be activated to? It, it's a more complicated question and I'm probably not the best that can answer that directly. But I would explain that if there are overhead sections of the line elsewhere and those sections of line need to be deenergized for public safety, then the underground lines that's attached to it will also be deenergized.
Still be subject to shutdowns.
If it's the case that I explained, yes.
Awesome. Thank you for the great question and thank you for providing the technical engineering thing, right? It goes back to the fact that west side of Oahu has these lines that run in the middle of sidewalks all the way across the Hawaiian shore, which is not in compliance with federal ADA line laws, but we still allow them for some reason. But the same thing happening in Waikai. One threat of a Sioux job and the entire pole was moved 20 feet. So these things are systematic and that's the reason why our board is Environmental Justice Committee, which tries to address these issues, which is beyond the control, we know, of us mere engineers and community liaisons. But trying to help work with our community members for the betterment of all of us and our well-being. So mahalo nu'u loa, we appreciate you guys coming out and making the effort to give us an update and keep on doing the community outreach and the goodwill engagement of seeing whether or not exceptions can be made in order to provide the funding to put them on the ground. And my ask would be not just for us because we're the ones saying no, but you should be doing them for everybody, like as part of Hiko's rollout. It's their commitment to the health of the state, in my mind. Like super, super way to actually rebuild goodwill with the communities. Yeah. Thank you so much again. Appreciate it. So board members, given the presentation and the new docket number, which is 2023-20, sorry, 2023-0235, the chair would recommend that we continue our position as in 2023-0234, opposing the above-ground power lines portion of the project. We're not against the project, that it's above ground. Is there a motion to adopt the chair's recommendation? Second vice chair moved, first vice chair seconded.
Second.
At this time, any public testimony for the board taking the official position that you should put them on the ground? Okay, going once, going twice, going three times? And with testimony, testimony now closed and now board discussion. So board discussion is open, chair recognizes first vice chair, Mikayla Lindstrom.
Apologies, Chair, I'll be fast. You know, we're still learning about our unique community. Prior to 1990 and the development of Kapole, no one really lived on these flat plains. You know, they, they really didn't. And so we're learning as we're living. And so we're not just here for our community, we're here for the future community of this place. No one ever lived here before. Yeah, you know, and so we're still learning about the land and what it can take. I mean, we have a sinkhole environment. Representative Garcia just had a town hall on that, super fascinating. But, but we do, and, and so we're still learning what this aina can hold and the capacity of it. And the demand is huge, but the man just has to wait. And cost and monetary value can't be put on that right now. And Kalailoa, you know, this, this quarter is, is right through Kalailoa. Kalailoa is a super unique environment and land. And so we just have to take that into consideration. We can't just go forward like we've done with every single development. We are unique as a community. We have to understand that. That's all I want to say. Mahalo.
Chair recognizes board member Moon Kahale.
Check two. I'm not an engineer, but I know excavation. So when you lay utilities in a trench, the first utilities is water. Sewer, then water. I stand by that. Sewer, then water. Cable and electricity is on the top. Am I correct to say that?
I would say I think so. I, I don't, I don't plan the streets. So I am, I'm not a city or a state planner for the streets, but I think.
No, it's just basic excavation.
It makes sense that sewer is gravity-fed, so that would make sense.
So electricity is, electricity is a utilities on top. So you don't have to go that deep to lay your wires or your cables.
Yep, we have city and state mandates of public.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, give some ideas and some options because you didn't have to dig that deep to lay your electrical utilities. And like I said, I'm not an engineer, but I know a little excavation. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo. Any other discussion from the board? And chair recognizes board member Yalitahala.
Aloha, I just wanted to kakao, especially what Mikayla said regarding how unique this aina is. And we really need to malama it, that is, should be our guiding principle, especially coming from Hiko, who has the pleasure of being a monopoly here. You should be trying to steward our aina as best as we can. So although there is the demand for housing and jobs, we also know that a lot of the demand we're talking about, but not talking about is also profit. But there's just demand that falls higher than that, right? Demand for lives that can be protected. So to, you know, pave over the most arable farmland on this island just to make development, to put, you know, power cables above ground where we have brush fires here, like, I don't know, like a couple of weeks, every couple of weeks here, like out in the open, you know? Is really just antithetical to the Hawaiian way of living, right? And it's not going to take care of aina. And as we've come to hopefully understand truly ingrained ancestral knowledge, which is that if we don't take care of the land, it won't take care of us, right? So that should be hopefully the guiding principle. And mahalo to, you know, these young speakers on behalf of Hiko for coming to deal with us. But it would be really nice to have some people who actually make the decisions, you know? You're going to have the gall to go ahead and decide all these things for us. At least have the gall to come and explain it yourselves. So mahalo nu'u.
Mahalo, board member. Any other discussion from fellow board members? So I would like to offer a hopeful note that Kapole was envisioned as the second city for the island of Oahu. That we have the benefit of learning from all of the other learning and growth opportunities from other communities that were developed. We have one of the largest tracks, some of the largest tracks of land that still is not developed, including regionally for infrastructure. So let's creatively think, how can we solution find in order to make Kapole the best city and community for quality of life for the future generations? Because if all we do is repeat the same patterns from before, did we actually grow and learn? So my hope is that we can work with Hiko to figure out how this can be better. Like utility corridors, do you need assistance with easements? Do we need to actually approach the federal government because of the fact that they were the ones that transferred the land back in shoddy condition when they gave it back in the first place? In Kalailoa district area, like, yeah. I think our board is willing to work, to be collaborative in order to help make this the best community we can possibly. And hopefully, we all can sleep well at night, knowing that we did our best, or not just us today, but the future generations. So mahalo nui loa, and thank you again for being here. Now, let's invite up the next presentation by Aloha Carbon on Aloha Sustainable Materials Recycling and Fertilizer Facility update. And I believe.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
We were gonna vote.
Oh, we forgot to vote, excuse me. Your, your point of order is well taken. That was the nicest point of order I've had in a while. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of sending in a letter of opposition for P U C docket number twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty thirty-five for all portions that are underground. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty thirty-five for all portions of utilities to be underground. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say a'ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Hearing none, chair calls it unanimous. Okay, great. And thank you again for the gentle point of order reminder. Now, let's invite up Aloha Carbon to talk story with us about how we're going to minimize our waste stream so we can make landfills a thing of the past.
It's gonna be a short update tonight, but good evening, everybody. My name is Naomi Kukat-Kallahan. I'm here on behalf of Simone Petri Enterprises and Aloha Carbon. I handle the community outreach and engagement. So I've made a few appearances previously at the meetings to give updates on our Aloha Carbon and Smurf projects, as well as provide early access to our preliminary draft of our environmental assessment for the Aloha Smurf and give updates on its publication status. So tonight, I'm actually very pleased to announce to the board and the community, after much anticipation, our draft environmental assessment for the Aloha Smurf has officially been published by the Department, uh, I'm sorry, the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. It was published this past Monday, September twenty-third, and is officially open for comment until October twenty-second. Just a heads up, it is over a thousand pages in length. It's filled with a lot of good informative content, but we might suggest that maybe you take a look at it a little sooner instead of waiting till the last couple of days of the comment period, just so you have enough time to go over it. But we do encourage everybody to take a look at it. So the document can be accessed through our website at alohacarbon.com, and comments can be sent to v a at alohasmurf.com. And if you guys give me a few minutes, as soon as I'm finished up here, I'll hop back. Hopefully, I have just enough battery life, and I will plug those into the chat just to make sure everybody who's online can have access to the links and that everybody who's present also has the correct spelling for the links. And then, so just to finish up, I would like to formally request from the neighborhood board, possible, to get a letter of support for the Aloha Sustainable Materials Recycling and Fertilizer Facility.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the update at this time from the board or community? Chair recognizes board member Mikayala Lindstone.
I'd just like to update the community for those who are here for the first time. So Aloha Carbon is taking construction waste and converting it into fuel. And I might, I just want to make sure I got.
We're doing a couple of things.
You're doing a lot of things, that's just one. I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to just let the public know what we're voting on.
Uh, in a nutshell, just for what, what we do is basically we are working to divert waste from being landfillled, and we are working to recycle and reduce it. A big part of that waste is going to be construction and demolition waste, which currently gets landfillled at P V T, but we are looking at additional waste streams to make a variety of value-added products such as renewable energy, which will actually help to sustainably self-power our facility, as well as create local organic and potash fertilizers. And we are also looking into recycled building materials. We're not quite there yet, but we are looking into it.
Mahalo, you said that so much better than me. Aloha Carbon also takes invasive materials, and they convert that into, I believe, fertilizer. And they're actually, they actually have a project where they're growing, like, susumi? Susum.
Just finished closing out the first phase of our fertilizer project, where we actually took invasive waste from different land clearing projects. Some of it was actually guinea grass that came from land clearing, clearing projects after the Lahaina fires. And we actually sent that up to a lab to be gassedified. We took the ash from that waste, because it's clean green waste, and we worked with U H C tar to formulate our first batches of fertilizer, all from locally produced materials down here. And we conducted a couple of crop trials where we grew ginormous cucumbers and a lot of bok choy. So we are currently working on, hopefully, getting ready for the next phase of our fertilizer projects to conduct a much larger scale crop trial with different types of vegetables, you know, just to test the efficacy and the viability of the project itself. So it is very exciting. We've been doing a lot of work over the last couple of months, a lot of different projects coming in. And in fact, I think the last time that I saw you was at our site. You got to take a look at some of the work that we've done, and it's changed even more since we last saw you. There's a lot of older, like, equipment that has been ripped out, a lot of clearing that has been done, and so it's actually starting to look more realistic.
Yeah, so when you think about it, exciting, like, going back to council member Tupula, who is here, like, we don't need landfills, we can take this and we can make bricks, right? So this is Aloha Carbon is taking these, you know, invasives, cucumbers, right? Demolition, construction materials, fuel, and diverting waste from Waianae to, to their plant in Campbell Industrial. So just a summary, because they've been so great with community engagement and have been coming back and back, so mahalo.
Mahalo, any other questions, comments, or concerns, given the update? Chair recognizes Dr. Kilni Dudley.
Yes. Okay, so you make fertilizer. Do you also make bricks?
Not yet. So one of the things that we're looking at doing, it has been asked of us, but because I believe of certain regulations that are in place, we aren't able to do the testing yet. However, we are looking into it to be able to reuse the ash to hopefully make some other recycled building products. So it's, we're looking into it, we're just not quite there yet.
You know, you came to talk to us once or twice?
Times.
Three times, okay. And then there was another group that was somehow opposed to what you were doing.
Yes, I think they were in favor of landfilling versus not landfilling.
Okay. And did we ever have them come? And you were going to, Mister Chair, kind of sit, sit and let the one side talk and the other side talk and so forth? Did we ever do that?
So the, um, the, the second vice chair is asking whether or not we extended an invitation out to those parties that would like to actually talk with us, with the current project participants about their concerns so that we can get a better understanding. And to this date, they have not responded to come to such an engagement.
Okay. I, I'm not saying that we should have that. I just wondered if we ever did have that when I was absent, perhaps. But I, I do want to say that, you know, that your project is something that I really think we need, and keep up the good work, do more work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or concerns from the community? Hearing none, there was a request. Oh. Chair recognizes board member Paulo.
Aloha, I just wanted to mahalo you for your incredible community engagement for a couple of years now. I follow your guys' website, and so I was very excited to see that the publish, that your publication had come out on Monday, and I started making my way through it already. So yes, I keep up the good work, mahalo.
Thank you so much.
Great, seeing no others coming to the virtual or in-person microphone for comments, questions, or concerns. There was a request for a letter of support, which this board usually does, generally, acknowledging support for a project that has come before us. Is there a motion to provide such letter of support? It's been moved and seconded by Dr. Kilni Dudley and board member Mun Kahale to offer a letter of support for the Aloha Carbon project, particularly noting for their environmental assessment or impact statement review that is going on currently. Is there anyone wishing to testify from the public? Going once, going twice, going three times? No need to testify, because you've been here so much, everybody knows what's going on. Hey, good job. Any discussion from the board members? Hearing none, I would only like to add that what I really appreciate about how you're engaging is not only are you coming to the community, but you're willing to experiment and do the testing locally and work with our university and other partners on island or in the state to see how we can make it a reality, rather than just saying, no can. No can do. Sorry, got a landfill. So really appreciate your willingness to experiment and figure out how can. Really appreciate that. All those in favor of the general letter of support, say aye. Any opposed, say a'ole. Any kanalua or abstentions? Hearing none, chair calls it unanimous. Congratulations, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on diverting waste from the waste stream so that landfills become obsolete. Now, we are going to be graced by the Department of Community Service to give us a presentation on the homeless outreach and navigation for the unsheltered, or honu, and the proposed temporary shelter and navigation site at the vacant lot between Kapole Hale and Food Kapo'e, also locally known as the Musubi Lot. Mahalo, welcome.
Aloha, and good evening, Chair Paris, members, members of Neighborhood Board thirty-four. Thank you for your service to the community. I also like the use of 'ala hawai'i and how profusely it's used in this neighborhood board. I'm mayor's representative for Liliha. I don't hear, we don't get that very much in my Liliha neighborhood board that I, the mayor's representative for. So the name honu is acronym, as indicated, for the homeless outreach and navigation for unsheltered persons. But also, when we set up the tents that comprise our honu, where it's temporary emergency shelter that we provide for homelessness, it actually resembles a honu from Oahu. So for folks online that don't know what a honu is, it's turtle. So when we look, set up the tents and the shape and the, and the round shape that we put it in, it does resemble a honu shell. So our honu program is one of the programs we continued from the prior administration, the Caldwell administration. And what we're targeting is the 4,494 homeless individuals that were identified in the point-in-time count last year, or, you know, the folks that weren't counted as well. But that point-in-time account identified about half of them were sheltered and half of them are unsheltered. So trying to focus on a solution to get those unsheltered people navigated into the program, into a system. These folks are brothers and sisters on the street struggling with economic issues, substance abuse, health issues, or mental health issues that, you know, are barriers for them to be housed. But we're also dealing with victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, sex assault, trauma, stalking, and other types of issues like that. You know, unfortunately, it happens more often than you think, you know? So when we have a mobile shelter like honu, we do see people making a break to our shelters, whether it's survivors or people that will now survive from, in a domestic violence situation, folks being sex trafficked and otherwise. It's, it's a pretty sober experience. And, you know, with, with our other neighborhoods, we also offered tours. If anybody wants to come by and visit, once we get this thing set up, so you can kind of see what's in there. But what you're gonna see in there are people, our family, our men, women, that can have had their moment of clarity, want to become, again, contributing members to society and reintegrate, and we want to help them with that transition. With me tonight, I also have two staff that run the program. If you have any questions, and if we proceed with this project item, and we do well, because right across the street, you will see them around. If you have any questions, you can, you know, feel free to contact them. I have Tori and Melanie back here. And Melanie's running my slides, and I'm glad they're working. Our homeless strategy as a whole is to develop as many creative solutions we have, we can, to get homeless to engage the system. And once they're in the system, how do we keep them in the system? So where honu fits in this is to meet people physically where they're at, right? So sometimes, either your shelter is, you know, sometimes when I do this program, might be in like Evi Lake or something like that. How do we get in the shelter? Oh, it might get curious, how do you try it? Or you, you as a family member might have a Ohana member on the street saying, hey, you know, why don't you just go on the street, just try it out one night and see what, see what happens. And but in that one night, what we see is a moment of clarity. You know, they get, they sleep and not worried about, you know, being assaulted at night, getting their stuff stolen, or whatever it is. We give them one meal a day, they, they get stable, they get a mental clarity and say, what am I doing? Right? And from there, we're able to kind of pace them with a fairly good success rate. But that's where it fits in our, in our program. Otherwise, we've also been investing in other services in the mayor's news that are like health services, like we obviously opened that facility over in Ala area for medical, low barrier medical. People can come in, they don't have to worry about medical insurance. We can get them cleaned up again, connect them with medical insurance, and help the, you know, restore their longevity. Um, let's see. Um, so honu, we've been at this for about five years. And we work a lot with our different partners on this. And we hope in the five years we got, that we've gotten better. We've also been picking sites, and Kapole is gonna be a new site for us. We're kind of excited by that. But we want to recognize and want to be good neighbors to this neighborhood. We were aware of the bringing encampment that was happening in Musubi, the ones that's happening in our backyard here, Kapole Hale, but also at the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Kapole Regional Park. We want to take care of that too, as a well-used park, highly utilized by community members. We want to know that, we saw that, we want to address that. And, you know, so it was, we were trying to find different places. So, you know, in a matter of like a week, we met with them and said, hey, what about the Musubi Lot? I said, what about the Musubi Lot? And they said, well, why don't you clear it? And just in a week time, everybody mobilized, we got the folks out there clearing that. You probably saw it come down. We're gonna continue to clear that lot to get all the clear. But right now, we have enough for a footprint for our honu program. But we're gonna probably, we're gonna work to, can you clear that down all the way? We also did enforcements in there, we'll continue to enforcements in the areas, including the Parks and Rec site, the regional park, to kind of keep at that, provide them a compassionate place, an alternative to, place to go that will be productive for the community as well. But yeah, we work tremendously with our partners. We also did outreach with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, that them know we're coming, let the Navy know we're coming for their properties in Kalailoa. We also reached out to our service provider network, the folks servicing the area, Kalaho West Oahu, U S Vets and Project Vision. So we're all working in synergy on that and towards a shared goal there. Um, other sites we've been to, one thing they all have in common in the nearby vicinity, there's a homeless encampment. So most recent one we're at is Neo Blaze Park, and we're addressing that area, the encampments along the Proharbor Bike Path. So that's the one thing they all have in common, and you know, this is one thing that we're hoping to bring to this community as well. Um, so how honu operates, we kind of see as a bus stop. Like I said, we physically meet them where they're at. You know, we don't have, we do have community service workers in there to help them navigate, help them get identifications or things they may need to enter shelter. But we also do medical referrals and figure out what kind of services they need. Placements outside of honu, sometimes, you know, in the moment of clarity, they realize, maybe mom and dad are right, and then they'll seek their help. And so it's family reunification, where we're able to reunite them and family. Sometimes we find people lost here from the mainland, and we send them back to the continent. Otherwise, if they need to go into a drug treatment service, or otherwise, we also connect them with that. But honu is our, you know, military-grade Zoomero tents. Also, they're not gonna be tarps, we're not gonna create a tarp city outside, outside here. On here, it's gonna be some pop-up tents, but mostly primary Zoomero's. We also provide some shower trailer services and things like that, and hygiene services to kind of get them back on their way. Um, these are just more pictures of honu. Like I said, when it kind of come on a circle, you can kind of see from above. It kind of starts to look like a turtle, yeah? But this is the only twenty-four-seven program on the island that provides twenty-four-seven access to shelter. So it's kind of a. But this is the only 24/7 program on the island that provides 24/7 access to shelter. So it's kind of a critical thing when we do city enforcements, you know, at different times of the day. Next slide. So like this just kind of shows more picture, picture of the bus stop model, right? So we get the person, they come to HONU, and from there, you know, we identify what's the best match for them. We identify services and we identify placements for them. Kialaho West Oahu has been a great partner for us, and they have the shelter nearby, so we have those kind of relationships and partnerships. We get a good flow in there. So even though the HONU can fit like 40, 50 people, we have a, you know, a continuous throughput through that, through the shelter when you have these kind of relationships in place. We're also getting referrals, people can walk in. We also work with law enforcement service providers as well as our new crisis outreach response and engagement team under emergency services and ambulance guys, yeah? For folks to enter HONU, I've stressed that this is a voluntary program. We don't have too many involuntary ways where we can detain folks. And those would be things like criminals or mental health issues and corporal pagans, instrumental in that end of the spectrum. So it's not, so we don't necessarily call it a homeless solution. If it's a criminal activity, it's a criminal activity. HPD knows what to do with those guys. It's the homeless guys that we got. You know, we could try and figure out how to passionately deal with these guys, put them on their feet again. So it's voluntary to enter the program and want to engage in activities to get themselves sheltered, pose no danger to themselves or others, be capable of performing activities of daily living, living without staff assistance, so stand, walk, utilize hygiene facilities, go to the bathroom on their own, and then agree to apply, comply with onsite rules, including ATM curfew, noise regulations, appropriate behavior, as stating from alcohol and drug use while on the property. Sometimes where we find ourselves in parks and in neighborhoods right next to us and place the park art homes over there in that Lehuwa area that we want to make sure that we're good neighbors in that area. This one, I think we're kind of out in the open, but you know, if you still want to have, be good neighbors. If you guys have any complaints about the way HONU's actively, you know, and sometimes, you know, when you do the light towers to get light on the site, sometimes the light, when it comes down, somebody kicks it and goes in the angle. If it's pointing inside your house, let us know, bring it down, we'll get it pointed back to where it needs to be, but sometimes things like that happen, but if not, just, just give us a call, yeah? The, the number will be at the end of this slide there. And then, and then people that, you know, maybe are kicked out of the program, we can reconsider them on a case by case basis, because if they get kicked out of our program, sometimes, you know, they did something bad in the program and they were a threat to the others, and we just want to make sure the people in there are safe. So site requirements, next couple of slides are just data slides and things to kind of reiterate what I was talking about. So six to 10 Zoom rows, we have access to water, we'll be tapping a fire hydrant with that, working for the water to get that secured. Allow smoking and pets, because that's, you know, part of their lifestyle. We want to continue to observe and help them transition. Just because you have their HONU, we don't expect you to stop smoking or anything like that, you wouldn't be successful. Usually we stay in the area for nine into 120 days, and every time, and every HONU will have two HPD staff onsite at any given point in time. Sometimes the byproduct of that's been good for the community. So sometimes when we go to parks where there's bad activity going on, that kind of ceases. When we were on the Leeward Coast, and we had the blue lights somewhere in the beach parks, everybody slows down going down the road, happens on the west, on the, on the Y and I coast anyway. So we, there's also other positive by, byproducts of that, that the community also enjoys, but as I mentioned, you know, we have folks fleeing domestic violence situations, sex trafficking, things like that. And some of those guys have tried to come into our site and, you know, claim their people back. So like I said, it's a very real situation, but so HPD security is necessary, and it helps the community out quite a bit. Otherwise, you know, our program's been pretty good. The 2,200 placements out of the program, out of the 40,000, 4,095, 4,095 people that we've served over the past four and a half years or so. The next slide has, you know, this different statistics on. So it's not like a pure like 50% success rate, you know, you can see our most recent so far in 2024, we've been doing about two thirds of the folks that come through our doors, find successful housing someplace else. So we have peaks and valleys, we try different areas, we keep track of our successes in different areas, and you know, figure out what makes the program tick, what's, what's good about this, like what doesn't work, and how do we replicate that in different areas? Next slide. So, you know, our success is for us, it's a worth waiting program, you know, we have pretty good results as far as our success rate with it, it's modular, it's, we can pick it up, we can move it, we, like I said, meet just people physically where we're at. And, you know, we're able to give spaces back to the public, I mean, especially when they're invading in parks and like Old City and Park would be a good example. And we can give that back to the community after our time there, or during our time there as well. And then finally, we have the Kapole Musubi Lot, like I said, that just points to the lot we're at, you know, Kamaha and Kapole Parkway, you can kind of see there, Kapole Parkway on the bottom over there for orientation purposes. Will be more towards the Maka side of the lot, right? No? Yeah, it will be more towards the Maka side of the lot where the yellow, where the yellow arrows pointed. And like I said, it's pretty obvious if you drive home tonight, if you take a look at the lot, that's the portion that's cleared. And like I said, we got a commitment from DFM, they're going to continue to clear that lot, that it's, you can see straight across it. Because that was one of our things is when you have security, if you have campsite just on the other side, you know, it just might bother, right? So they said, no, Ed, you don't have to worry, this whole lot's going to be clear, you're going to be seen from side to side, left to right, top to bottom, and I said, oh, that's terrific. But, you know, this was like a, one week, even one week, they just kind of snapped through it, and we're making a lot of good progress there. So I do apologize, you know, we, it was kind of last minute thing, but it was just kind of last minute, last, last tell Mary pass to try and get this thing to Kapole, to kind of open up that regional park for you guys and be good neighbors to the businesses here in Kapole. If you have any questions, that's number for HONU, 768 HONU, or 668 is that number, so. We'd love for any questions.
Mahalo, Nui Loa, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions, comments or concerns from fellow board members? We'll start here with first one is Chair Mikael Lindstone, and then go down the line.
Mahalo for that great presentation. I know when you have a project, finding a location, that's like the biggest thing, and I think you found the perfect location. Chair and board, I support the location of this project, and I support this project fully. It's not going to solve everything, but we have nothing right now, and it's going to do something, and we have a rising, growing homeless population, and I hope Karen Polk from the chamber speaks more on this because she knows how it has affected businesses. I'm really looking forward to this project, and I hope that the community supports it. Mahalo.
Now to board member Matthew Khan.
Thank you so much. That was an awesome presentation. Great lot, Musubi Lot, every time you come out of Food Land, there's always an encampment over there. I saw you guys working on it today, you guys had your, your machines out there, you cleared out half of, I mean, it was real quick. Like you said, was it like, you know, in a week or?
A week, we kind of hustled everybody together with all the, you know, I know it's kind of frustrating, my, my, my coworker Keith Suzuki over there didn't have, didn't have some participation to get you the answers you needed, but sometimes, you know, when you put our heads together at the cabinet, you know, you get your answers going real fast and they start free flowing and it works out great like that. In fact, I heard there was a fire there a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it was. I live right across the street. Yeah, that was, that, that area is a problem area, but man, thank you so much for, for doing that, setting up a, it's kind of like you're setting up a small community over there, because there's a lot of, I've talked with a few of our houseless individuals over there, and they said, you know, it's really, I can't really sleep at night because I have to watch my things, and then, and if it's, if there's a female, she obviously has to stay up. So when you have that kind of community where everybody can be safe, you got your showers, you got police right there. I mean, that's, that's, that's great, because if you're up at night too, a lot of them are, some of them are in drugs too, so maybe they'll be less susceptible to do that. It, with your short experience with this, is there a, a huge, are you receiving a lot of people that are struggling with drugs, or have you seen a lot more fentanyl type of cases?
So Tori's been with the program for a very long time, so she, you don't have to talk about my short time, we can talk to Tori.
My name is Tori. I'm a case and supervisor there at the HONU program. We do have a high influx with those who are battling the addiction process of trying to get rid of that and get back into being sustainable in the society itself. They come from maxing out in prison time as well, and then also making sure that not only the people within the program is safe, but also the community areas that we're in, that we keep the community safe. So when they voluntarily exit or we have to exit them from the program for a cause, we don't leave them in the community, we pretty much offer them a ride back to the community that they came from, so that they're not reliving here in the community that we're servicing at the time. We don't just focus on Kapole, we actually take referrals islandwide, but the prior priority would be Kapole with us taking it from Kapole. I actually work outreach in the area as well, but when the outreach team had shut down back last November, and then they expanded into Kialaho West Oahu, taking over the entire Region Three and Five, along with the Y and I coast. It's a lot for them to endure of giving each individual services. And being that we were so close to housing so many of them that actually stay at the regional park, it allows us to reconnect with them, to get them back onto that system path of utilizing the state's funding side, shelter options, and then getting them to permanent housing, because we also do permanent housing transitions as well. So just reconnecting them with that services that they fall in between the cracks of not getting the services after not knowing where to go. So that location in particular is actually a good location because we have DHS building here, we have DMV here, and then we also have social security, because we helped them acquired the documents, the income, and also to get them back into the workforce. So want to rebuild community engagements with the individuals in this community as well, and the entire island. Every small impact makes a huge impact.
Thank you. Mahalo now to second by Chair Dr. Kiony Dudley.
I'm not sure where, where it is. Could you put the map back up there and explain a little bit more about where?
Apparently, there's the construction going on, they're building by American Savings Bank. The construction building, and then there's an empty lot that kind of has some brush, but because there's that small encampment right across Food Land parking lot on the opposite side of, I think it's Orthodontics or Endodontics Building. It's right there, that entire triangle square. That entire lot.
Okay, so it's, it's right, it's across the street from Food Land. Okay, very good.
And then I was thinking too, because our timeframe here that we're planning to be in the community would probably fall into that timeframe of having the holiday season we're coming up, but our city side, they're thinking of clearing out that entire lot. I just want to raise a flag and awareness for us and the community. People might think that'll be parking, but I'm not sure how you guys can delegate that, just so that the community is not so close to where we'll be set up, and we can kind of make sure that that's I guess pre-planned, that they don't, because we have the tower lights in the evening that will also generate whatever will happen in this area after the parade and everything for that holiday event for the community. Yeah. Only because when we deal with people facing domestic violence or they're fleeing, yeah, we don't want that to be like, oh my God, they're there, you know? So that's what we kind of look for as well for safety with the individuals that come to our program.
Mahalo, any other comments, questions, concerns now from the public? Chair recognizes community member Karen Polk.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair, Board. Karen Polk, Executive Director and CEO of the Kapole Chamber of Commerce. I'd just like to start by saying mahalo to DCS for bringing the HONU out to Kapole. Just for the community's awareness and knowledge, this is something that I've been really following for, since 2019, if not even a little earlier than that. I have about at least 20 businesses in the, in the area that have been in communication with me over the years, and it's progressively worsened to the point where even recently, we did have someone from the mayor's office come out, we did a full tour last month and met with the businesses. I have a a physical therapy clinic, and their clients will not come at night, they've lost business. And when do you go and get physical therapy? You go after work, but they're afraid because they were chased to their cars, and even the workers are afraid. I have schools where the children are affected by things I can't say publicly that are happening in front of them, and it's, it's a very serious problem. It's affecting, you know, economies of scale. We have many of our businesses who have had to hire additional security, and it's affected their budgets. And, and so there's an economic impact on the business. There's the social, social piece that we all know about, but I, I really commend having the HONU out here. You know, we have to look at the whole greater community, but we're also like Chair mentioned, the second city. And I think now's the time to really embrace it, take hold of it, and look at the systemic solutions in our future to, to keep this managed. So thank you, mahalo, and I, I just, I'm very happy to see this happen for our, our community. Mahalo.
Chair, if I could say one more thing. Chair, so what I promised Karen is by the end of this week, I'll have a press release out indicating that HONU will be coming to the Kapole community at the Musubi Lot. But I'll make it available to everybody, so if you guys want to share it, so Karen wants to share it with the Kapole Chamber of Commerce, welcome to do that. Neighborhood Board members, if you guys want to share that with folks in your spheres of influence, by all means, please share that, and you know, the more interest we can create and support for, we can create for the program, the more successful we will be. Thank you.
Any other community members wishing to ask questions, raise concerns or provide comments? Senator Kraut, please.
Sorry, I just had a clarifying question. What was the date you folks are trying to expect to implement the project?
That's a good question. I don't think I said that. Thanks for your support anyway, but we're looking to start October 1st.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other question, comments or concerns from the community? Come on up. Please, member to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Anna, and I live just across, you know, from the Kapole Parkway in Mahana community. So obviously, the problem of homeless has been really acute in our neighborhood, especially, I think. So one of the questions was already answered when the project is supposed to start. So that's October 1st, as I understand the project will last about three to four months. So I see kind of a good and a bad side to it. It's good that the homeless people will be kind of collected in a more structured manner with, you know, police patrolling it, so which is really nice. My other question or my concern is in your practice in the past, after the HONU project is gone from that place, what kind of effect it usually had on the, you know, on that particular spot where it used to be housed? Like, did it attract even more unsheltered individuals after it's gone, or it kind of solved the problem at least for a while? So just what happened before. Thank you.
Mahalo, great question, and come on up, yeah.
So I previously, like Katie LaGould, we were there for quite some time during COVID, that heavily used by partners and community members, so that's definitely cleared out. We don't, we didn't control everything under limit, highly of course, but I don't foresee any potential issues with individuals coming back and trying to make house in the area that we're at. And we always beautify the place while we're staying there. Our workers, we do keep up with the upkeep of the property, and then before we leave, we also maintain it. And then with everyone in the community, besides our program coming in to assist and service the unsheltered individuals in the community, there's ongoing assistance for outreach that's here in the community, and that's Kialaho West Oahu. So if you have concerns or you need to refer somebody for assistance, that's the actual outreach program that you'll contact is Kialaho West Oahu to send their team out to meet those individuals where they're at, and then they'll figure out if they can come to HONU, they'll call us, we'll take in their individuals as long as We'll take in their individuals as long as they're willing to take the services. And if not, they'll service them and clear them from that area. So I believe that bike path or that back area by the construction area in Mahana, that's a huge area where encampments are formed because it's darker, it's not well lit, and it kind of becomes a problem for the residents in that um location. So after we leave our site in particular, I don't see homelessness staying there, but also utilize that services in your community to have them continuously work with the community to get them where they need to go.
Is there a, sorry, Chair, is there a possibility that you could possibly go over 120 days and stay past that?
We could go to a permanent, no, I'm kidding. No, but yes, we, there is a potential that we could extend if we cannot find a next location. We would ask for um the permission to stay a little bit longer. Like, in Pro City, we're only supposed to stay there for three to four months. I think we've extended our permit two or three times because every community we went to after didn't really welcome the idea of Hono at the time. So we're still working on different communities to service because I feel that when we do go into the communities, we touch those that fall between that gaps of services. And it's not that we're trying to bring in more homelessness. We want, we want to target the ones that want the assistance that fell through the the connecting agencies and get them back on track and get them out of the living situation.
Mahalo, um, any other questions, comments, or concerns from the community members at large?
This is uh Darren Holbrook, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Darren.
Yeah, ever I start my video freeze. But I'm with the Neighborhood Security Watch in the villages of Kapole, and this has been one of our concerns for a couple of months now, but we're not educated on how to do this. We're seeing a more and more increase in homelessness in our residential area. So uh we have uh some training in October that we finally found somebody to help us out on. So we're looking forward to that and working with the Hono to try to help solve or help lessen this issue. So I'm interested in knowing who who we call other than the Hono number that you said uh that we would call somebody in West Oahu to reach out to, to report uh issues that we may have or experiencing. Could you say that number or the name again?
I'll try and find the details for their contact in this area, but it's Kialaho West Oahu. The acronym for their program is KWO.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome, thank you, community member Darren Holbrook, Neighborhood Security Watch Point Person for A'Loa villages. And um that's a great network that we can utilize in order to help um steer people that are unsheltered, willing to do the work with support to get back on their feet. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from community members? Uh, is that a hand from Tiare? Tiare Ta'ala, board member, go right ahead.
I call on my, I think my hand is the last time.
No worries. And I see committee member Uncle Patrick Watson, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and mahalo to the folks that did the presentation. Uh, I've experienced that Hono uh project in several different areas where I've worked and played, um, including the very first one at the Waipahu Cultural Center by the Waikeli Stream. And I can tell you that um the atmosphere after that pro- uh program took care of the people there was really uh improved, you know? Like, it really seemed like the the issues were cleaning up in those areas. And I mean, I can just go down the list of several of these places, but I had a question. And that is, how long is the average client allowed to stay in this program? Could you, I know you're talking just about Hono, but like, how long do you typically see the client um stay in this entire program? And how much is the cost per individual to take care of these people?
So for the Hono program itself, there's no um timeframe of them staying. As long as they're complying with our guidelines, they're able to stay until shelter space is available or um wherever they're transitioning to as far as transitional housing, permanent housing, or relocation. So there's no pushout time, as long as we're in the service area, they're able to stay. If we have individuals who are still with us and we relocate to a different district, they are offered to come with us to the next location if they still haven't been offered the shelter space. So being that we're a program that transitions from the street to our program to possibly emergency shelter or transitional housing or permanent housing, um, we don't have priority on the waitlist for the other programs that we work with. We are going up against those who are walking into shelters trying to get shelter space available. But while they're with us, the benefit of that is that they're getting services done that they would have to engage with case management at that shelter or program to get that started. So they kind of move over with everything that they need already, and they're just working on that housing or sustainability pathway with that case manager from that point forth. And then um, what was your other question? I'm sorry?
Uh, the cost per client, roughly?
Um, we don't have a program fee that we charge. Shelter spaces, if they have um income, they are required to pay a small program fee, and it differs by program. Um, costs per?
Yeah, I'm trying to get like a rough estimate in terms of how much the taxpayer is, uh, you know, footing the bill for these programs and these individuals. So if you have like a rough number, you know, per client.
So I mean, I don't really have, not trying to avoid your question, sorry, sir, but I don't really have an answer to that. So I think we did have initially when we launched the program, HPD, Hono Police Department was running that. I think it had um some costs that they were absorbing through their um their organization that they had. So some of their staffing, some of their security costs were a little bit different than ours uh running as the Department of Community Services. So we've been only been running this program for the past, not quite a year yet. So I don't have a good picture on on how much it's actually costing us. We also have some static in the data as well, because during the pandemic, certain restrictions were based on shelters and capacity limits. So our Hono program had to scale up and be able to accommodate more people that want to be sheltered, but couldn't be accommodated at shelter because the shelter capacity's got slashed in half, just like classrooms did and and other uh institutions did. So I mean, I'm not trying to dodge your question, I don't really have a number for you. I mean, we're just, we're just trying to figure out what that number is. And I'm actively trying to figure it out because our budget cycle starts some next January, and I got to submit something to the mayor, so um. Right now, it's it's funded partially by state funding, uh, O'Hana's own funding. And that funding of, was it about two million, I think? Two point six million dollars, uh, you know, had traditionally, had ordinarily covered the program for um cost, and except we're just discovering the other cost that we're, we're trying to develop, you know, not having the same um kind of 24/7 type of programming like HPD had had. So we're starting, trying to work on that number. Sorry, I'm not trying to dodge your question.
I understand, but I think it would be fairly important to determine what the cost is for the taxpayer. I'm attending the meeting tomorrow night at 2:15 or 10 regarding the Kahalese over there and Ebyla Road. I'm aware of the Ebyla Center being purchased by the city for 50 million for 100 units. So I'm seeing these costs that are coming toward the taxpayer. I'm just wondering, how is that being accounted for? Like, how can we put a number on what it, you know, might take to shelter and take care of and rehabilitate somebody? That's all.
I mean, I will share that Hono is more expensive than a regular brick and mortar shelter. We we need, we need to make a 365, you know, degree of se- security perimeter. We don't have uh doors and walls and windows like a normal shelter would. We do use HPD for security uh versus, you know, other shelters can get by with a security contractor. There are premiums to do this, but um there are also successes in doing it as well, in this method as well. Um, and like I said, that's trying to bring the shelter to the person, get them curious, get other people engaged in their journey and and help, and get them engaged in our system. So um relative to your other point about um the other costs, like the Ebyla Business Center acquisition, uh, you know, Dallas, there is going to be interim use as a shelter, um, but as a, as a homeless shelter, but in long term, it's more for redevelopment, for transit-oriented development than for affordable housing. So it's more of a long-term. Uh, Mirror was going, playing the long game on that one, not necessarily the short-term gain on that. But as we heard earlier in this meeting, all that planning activities take time. So in the meantime, we're trying to uh use those a- assets productively. I will give you an idea, though. I mean, when we opened the All Arrested Center, the first few clients that we looked at, you know, I mean, we had some frequent flyers to the emergency room. So I mean, you know, the, one of the, the top two, I think, were, between the two of them, they were i- in and out of that emergency room like 30 times, uh, I don't know, 60 times. So one person was 37, the other one was like 28 times during the year. They had gone to the emergency room. So that's a, almost like every other week, the person's in the emergency room. So that care, um, I understand that the hospitals had absorbed that cost, not a taxpayer, but we're trying to figure out ways to get Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid, A for these things. Some of the things we're doing here is to get some analytics, get some data to kind of encourage and make policy decisions for the policymakers. So uh Medicaid, Medicare starts covering some of these street medicine costs, right? Because I think Kaiser's partner right now, uh, Project Vision, doing some outreach work in this community. And you know, they're paying stuff uh as like a diversion program uh for their emergency room uh with the folks on the street we have here, but because those costs are a lot cheaper than treating them in their facilities that they have. So um, all that stuff, we're trying to gather data on. We understand it's 2024, we're trying to get that data. We're trying to get that before policymakers to make better decisions and um find more creative ways to funding it and not on the taxpayers.
I appreciate the answer and and your time and your effort. Like I said, I'm I'm super supportive of what you folks are doing. And so I just, you know, I know the governor had pointed out that issue with the beds of costing a lot to send these people to at the hospital and trying to defray that cost by your program. So mahalo for all of you, too, thank you.
Mahalo, any other community members wishing to ask questions, provide commentary? Na'o? Seeing none at this time, uh, any closing remarks?
I just wanted to give that number for the outreach team for this area, for Kialaho West Oahu. I have two numbers. One is 808-745-6053. And the second number is 808-371-5461.
Mahalo, Nui Loa, really appreciate all of that. Okay, um, at this time, um, the Chair recommends that we officially extend our support and welcome to the Hono program for three to four months uh or longer if necessary, and begs a motion from the members. It's been moved by board member Moncahela, seconded by Michael Singleton. Is there any testimony from the community members on the Neighborhood Board's position to support and welcome them uh to our community? The Chair recognizes community member Karen Polk.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, um, yes, I would like to submit um testimony in support of having the Hono here from three to four months or more on behalf of the Kapole Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify at this time in person or online? Going once, going twice? Okay, um, Chair recognizes community member Val Tuiloma, go right ahead.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I actually, I'm calling from Kialaho West Oahu, the Outreach Director for Regions Three, Five. Um, the numbers that she had stated, those are our numbers, but it's for other um, other areas, other regions. Uh, but I had put my number, 808-745-6494, along with my email in the chat, if anyone um needs to reach out for outreach services. But if you do, all the two other numbers that she did mention, it's directed to my team, so someone will get the the message and it will be heard. But I do support the conclusion, being in Kapole, um, our shelters are extremely full across the island. And the fact that for 90 days, we have a traveling shelter that can help all parts of Oahu, I fully support that. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony and support and for your direct number. Neighborhood Security Watch members, pay attention. Okay, any other community members wishing to testify on this matter? Senator Kraut, please.
Aloha, members of the board, I'm Senator Kraut. I also stand in support um for the Hono project um being in this area. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Any other community members wishing to testify at this time? Going once, going?
Uh, Neighborhood Security Watch supports it 100%, and happy to have it.
Okay, thank you very much, Neighborhood Security Watch, Darren.
Yes, Darren, sorry.
Lots of testimony and support. Anyone wishing to testify in opposition? And no be afraid, it's okay. Going once for testimony, going twice, uh, going three times for testimony. And testimony now finished, now board discussion, first to board member Moncahela, go right ahead.
You made mention your concern earlier. Was the information relayed by the Hono team sufficient for you and your, I guess, your husband? Because you, you look a little, yeah, go ahead, brother.
I, first of all, I want to very much appreciate uh spend my appreciation for the work for the uh uh unsheltered individuals. Uh, but I have experienced a lot of um challenges with, you know, some encampments that popped up uh very close to my house. We were kind of right on the edge of, pardon me, uh, very close to my house. I'm kind of on the end of Mahana, so we're kind of right at the brunt of that. And that, you know, the uh, the area is, you know, visible in our, uh, you know, just our window. So it's important to us to try to at least preserve that balance between by, you know, providing uh assistance to the community that desperately needed, while still trying to maintain the quality of uh our neighborhood. It's like, you know, I'd like to um have my kids grow up in a nice area and that have uh, you know, just the qualities that we, you know, we tried, worked very hard to to try to hurt. Um, so there's nothing really uh that I object to in that regard, but um I just, uh, I do have concerns over really, you know, if if this is kind of a, attractive to uh mismanaged, um, uh, uh, I guess, you know, kind of a mismanaged uh uh organization or something. So I I just concerned with, uh, you know, if there's uh, if there are more encampments or things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, board member, and thank you, community member, for um coming and sharing that valid concern. Any other discussion from fellow board members? Hearing none, all those in favor to welcome uh Hono into our community and support their program for three to four months or possibly longer, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole or no. Any abstentions, say kananua. Hearing none, Chair calls it unanimous. Mahalo, Nui Loa, thank you so much um for coming to our community and providing this direct services. I would like to um note um, community member Patrick Watson, Uncle, brought up the question of costs. And then um Edward Lasmanos, the Director from Community Services Department, started to talk about the the defray costs for doing this. So it would be super helpful if members in our community that have access to that information to coordinate with Hono and the Department of Community Services, particularly the Chamber of Commerce, because of what is the um, was raised by Executive Director Karen Polk about budget increases and costs um for those members that are visiting um retail establishments? What's the cost in job hours? So it's not just the cost to the taxpayers, but it's the cost to our community, like what's happening because of these unsheltered community members not being um in places that's better for them. So it will be super helpful, um, and I think super helpful for the department as they go for their budget pitch about why we need programs like this to continue so long as we have unsheltered in our communities that's impacting the quality of life that um everyone deserves in our community, so that they can use the parks and walk to their cars and feel safe and um not have to worry about those people that are unsheltered. And I would also like to note um what um Director Lasmanos shared about the fact that they're treating the unsheltered parts of our community, not the criminal. Because those are two different parts of the community. And sometimes I think we think they're the same people, but they're not. The criminals are the ones that are actually actively doing criminal activity while are unsheltered, are the ones that just need a hand up because life happen. So let's help those that are willing to receive help and let's crack down on those that are being hard headed and the like receive help because that's why they're doing funny kind things. To make sure that our community is safe and welcoming. Okay. Now let's go to community board concerns and announcements, starting with board members. Any announcements, concerns, potential agenda topics? Chair recognizes first vice chair, Michaela Lindstone.
I'm just concerned that this room is so small, um, this month. I don't know if it's going to be like this next month. If we could get a heads up, I would appreciate it. Mahalo.
You're here. The chair was incorrect saying it was conference rooms A and B. It was a conference room half of A. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from fellow board members? Okay. While you're thinking, let's go to the community at large. Any announcements, questions, or concerns you'd like to bring forward? For our community, um, to know about. Chair recognizes community member Karen Polk.
Aloha, Karen Polk, I, Director and CEO for the Kapole Chamber of Commerce. Um, I have two announcements to make. First one is that there is, I, I think some of us remember there was a farmer's market that used to happen at Kapole High School, um, years ago. It actually closed down after seven years of being very successful and popular in twenty nineteen. Well, I have great news, uh, just this past, just this month, um, the same Mekkeke, um, has opened up in Kaliloa Town. Um, it's located on, um, uh, at Kaliloa Professional Center. And, uh, it will be this, to start, it will be on the second Tuesday, um, of every month. It is a farmers and green market. So it's not just food trucks. There are, there are some food trucks there that are very good. But there is truly, um, fresh produce and local products, um, for us to support. And so I just encourage you to come check it out. The next one is, uh, Tuesday, October eighth. There's live music. It's a great place to stop, four to seven P M. Um, stop on your way home from work. Um, the best place to get information, Waianae Coast Comprehensive Health Center is actually in Ella, Ella Pio's Social Services. They're the ones that actually, um, host this, uh, Mekkeke. And you can go onto W C C H dot com. It's also on the Kapole Chamber website. Um, if you need, and one other good piece of information is that I do have a community calendar on the Kapole Chamber website. You're welcome to send me information. I have someone that posts on there, but I have everything from business support to community, um, uh, uh, programs and, um, events on there. My second announcement is a Kapole Chamber, um, announcement. Um, I have a West Oahu Student Career Expo that is happening on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of October's last Thursday and Friday. It will be at U H West Oahu. Um, this is our fourth annual, um, and basically we have two thousand ninth graders that we bus onto the campus at U H West Oahu. And they are apt, uh, able to explore and interview employers. So when they're trying to figure out, what do I want to be when I grow up? What do I want to do? They're able to ask those questions and learn. Um, we have seven schools now. We started with Campbell and Kapole. But now we have Waianae, Island Pacific Academy, and the three charter schools this year. We're super excited. What I'm asking of the community for the next couple of weeks, I think I closed down the employer registration mid-October. Um, we are looking for businesses and employers to participate. Um, it is free. There is a commitment of being there for four hours each day in the morning. I know that's hard sometimes to get away, but it's such an investment into our future workforce. If you're interested, go onto kapolechamber.com and you can sign up today. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you for the announcement. Oh, if anyone has questions, comments, or concerns for that lengthy announcement? But a goodie. Hearing none, let's go to the next community member. Elina, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Cara England. I'm the president of the Rotary Club of Kapole. And I'm just kind of sharing with the members of the board and the community of the things we have done for the month of September. So we had C F S dinner at, um, the shelter at the House of Hope on the eleventh. We did the Out of Darkness Walk, it was awareness of, um, bringing awareness of suicide and mental health. And on the twenty-fifth first, this last Saturday, we handed out a hundred and fifty bottles of sunscreen that is reef friendly and it was well received. So we went to Kailea this time. Next time it's going to be in the North Shore and then back to the side. Um, also, just to kind of like let you guys know, on the twenty-eighth, we're going to decorate the gravesites at the hunch bowl ceremony for an event on the twenty-ninth, which is the nineteenth annual joint mem- memorial service. So I just kind of wanted to let you know that we're reaching out into that community as well. Now, this is an exciting thing. Um, one of our members came on the, on our meeting this past Thursday, said, you know, I want to go out and, and kind of help, kind of read and see the Hula mound at the Kapole Regional Park. So her name is Donna, and she's going to reach out into the, um, I guess it's city and county and see if what we can do to kind of beautify the Hula mound at the Kapole Regional Park. So that's an upcoming kind of project that we're going to do. That's all. Oh wait, I do have a, I do have a, um, a little saying. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. And that was by Helen Keller. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Great work in our communities. Appreciate the work of the Rotary. Okay, come on up, Elina. Aloha.
Thanks for the chance to speak with you this evening. My name is Melissa Marland. I made a three-one-one complaint and they, in their response, advised me to come here this evening, bring it to your attention as the body that can do something about it. And I thank you all very much for your serveness. It's going to be not news to anybody here. But anyway, my name is Melissa Marland. I've been a resident of Kapole since twenty fifteen. For the last three years though, my family has been overseas in Vienna, Austria, and we returned to Kapole in August. Uh, perhaps because Vienna does not have a homeless problem and because I've not seen Kapole Regional Park for three years, I found the homeless situation at the park to be striking. Um, I'm here today because my daughter informed me of two separate incidents in one week at the park. My daughter's school uses the park for P E class. On one occasion, a mentally ill woman threw a glass bottle toward the students, prompting the teacher to return the class to school because the situation was clearly unsafe. The very next P E class, a different woman with a big knife waved it at the children. Again, a different teacher ended the class early and returned the children to school. Separately, I'm aware that the school does not allow children to use the restrooms at the park, nor at Kapole Public Library because of safety concerns, which I believe are appropriate. I am not here to solve the root cause of the homeless crisis, and I have really enjoyed being at this meeting and learning what everyone is doing, the good work. Um, in that regard, very excited to hear about Honu. I'm here to state that it is unacceptable, the taxpayers cannot safely use the park and public facilities. And I'm requesting that an on-foot police officer be present and visible in the park during its operating hours to ensure public safety. And I thank you very much for your consideration. I need that immediately. It is a short-term solution and maybe even that police officer could refer people to Honu. Thank you very much.
Mahalo, thank you so much for raising that concern. Chair begs the creation of the Parks and Recreation Committee Chair for recommendation given the community's, community members' concern.
I know exactly who you're talking about. The wom- the two women. I know exactly. And it's scary. Super, super scary. And, um, when that happens and I'm at the park, I get scared for everyone there. I, I tense up and my first instinct is to call H P D, but I know by the time they get there, she'll be gone. Um, but it is scary. I agree. If, if the board can do, I, I, I don't know whether a riser or, or, or something, um, to H P D. I agree that an H P D officer should be there, especially this Saturday, she was there. Um, and I don't know, she might have had a knife, but, but she was, she looked like she was going to attack someone. Um, the, the children that were going there for their soccer game were, were fearful to the utmost. And, and I was fearful for them. Um, but yeah.
So I'm hearing the, the concerns of the community and the report of the Parks and Recreation Chair of our neighborhood board, the chair is recognized, um, is recommending, uh, two actions that the board take. The first is to request H P D's, uh, on foot, on foot police presence during operation hours at Kapole Regional Park until the incident is resolved. And the second is, um, is to request, uh, H P D to look into the criminal activity that was verbalized at this meeting, uh, tonight and and a side request is to the community members that have witnessed, if they have video or testimony of children or te- or teachers, is to provide that to H P D so they can actually address the criminal activity. Um, threatening people with knives is, is criminal. It's not an unsheltered issue. Um, they may have, um, extenuating circumstances, but that is the proper channel that we've been advised to try and care for our community members.
And, and Chair, if I may add, there are individuals at the park that, that do have guns. And I think I shared, uh, a picture of that with, with Karen Polk.
So, uh, the recommendation still stands. We recommend, uh, requesting H P D for on-foot police presence during operating hours of the regional park until the instances of that have been made known to us are addressed. And the second is requesting they look into, uh, possible criminal activity with threats of violence and towards our parkgoers and children. Is there a motion to do? Okay, it's been moved by second vice chair, no, moved by board member Moncahale. Is there a second?
Second.
By the first vice chair. Now we are taking up, uh, any testimony from the public regarding the two board, uh, actions before us.
Yeah, I'd like just to say, I mean, it's a shame that, um, Department of Community Services had left before you could speak. Um, so I would just like to encourage, I'm happy to connect with you, but I'd like to take even what you said just directly to them because I think there's this connection of them setting up this Honu with H P D there, um, that might expedite the process too. So I'm happy to assist you with that, um, with that afterwards. Thank you.
Mahalo, uh, community members reaching out to help community members. That's what we're about. Any one wishing to testify on these two items before the board? Police presence during regional park. We will get word discussion after the testimony. Yeah, okay. So just hold on for a second. Okay. Okay, testimony going once, testimony going twice, testimony going three times. Um, Chair recognizes community member Patrick Watson on the matter before us, which is requesting police presence during operating hours at the regional park until such time that the current violent incidences are addressed. And the second is to, uh, request H P D to look into and investigate alleged criminal activity, um, in the park. Threatening our Kiki.
Yeah, mahalo Chair, and I just wanted to share, um, I was at the park, uh, probably about a month and a half ago. And, um, I went to go use the restroom kind of near the, uh, the library side. And there was all this commotion going on and H P D was there and they were pulling, uh, a woman who had mental issues out of the men's restroom, screaming, cussing at them, throwing punches. I mean, it was just outlandish. I actually caught it on video. And as he took her away, I just, I just felt compelled to apologize to the H P D officers that have to contend with this day after day after day. You know, like it, it's a shame, you know? And so, uh, yeah, as far as supporting, having more police presence there to maybe ward off that from happening before it gets bad, you know, I definitely support that one hundred percent. So mahalo.
Any other community members wishing to testify, going once, going twice, going three times? And now we go to board discussion, going to second vice chair, Dr. Kian Lee Dudley.
Testing, good. Uh, Mr. Chair, the, um, these folks is having real problems with manpower. Um, our, uh, district out here is the most stressed as far as manpower is concerned. I think that if we, I, I think that we need to word, uh, anything that we send to them uh, with the, the, this recognition. And I don't think that it's possible for them to put somebody in the park, um, all the time when it's open because I just don't think they have that kind of manpower. And there are a, a lot of other things that they really need to watch too. So I, I, I just think that we need to be careful about what we do say and how we word this. Thank you.
Any other board members wishing to discuss this matter at this time?
I, I agree, um, with Vice Chair, um, Kian Lee Dudley, uh, the, and I agree that we should word the letter to the appropriate times when there are the most children there, uh, especially.
Chair recognizes board member Moncahale.
I understand the, uh, employment situation and everything else, but we do have reserve officers. And we can use that lot. I don't want to go to National Guard and reserves, but we can use the reserve police officers. Or maybe we can even extend our optional out to the police academy. And they can do, do some type of internship, some type of that, of that option. But, and I understand that we're short on police officers, but the safety and welfare of our kids. We're talking about kids. We're not talking about, you know, and I got a fifteen-year-old daughter. And I, I, I truly understand what this young lady behind me feels, just the, the thought of being threatened. Um, it ain't going to go. It, it's not, it's not fair. Thank you.
Any further discussion from fellow board members? Seeing no other further discussion. The chair recognizes the, um, the fact that H P D is stressed on our side. Our board has taken a resolution acknowledging that and making suggestions on how we can ameliate that. Um, so, um, I also recognize that if we don't ask, we're not going to get anything. And if we don't highlight the problem, then other people's problems are going to be addressed before ours. So I fully recognize that H P D will likely not be able to staff that all the time. But if we don't ask for them to do that, they might not give us a patrol officer to be there when the kids are actually on P E. So I say we give it the gusto and then work with them on the vaccine about what is possible. Because the concern I've heard is threat of violence and actual violence with weapons. This is not a neighborhood security watch issue. This is not a citizen's arrest issue. This is potential like assault, um, and on our young ones. So I think it will behoove us to send a very clear message that this is requested. And if they can't provide it, please explain why. And we can work with you on the why. We cannot work with you with ignoring the problem. So with that said, I still, um, unless there's a movement to amend the, the motions as presented, I will call for the vote as presented, which is requesting, we're not ordering, we're requesting H P D to send on-foot police, um, to man Kapole Regional Park during operating hours. And requesting that they investigate the allegations of criminal activity, including threat of violence against our Kiki. criminal activity, including threats of violence against our Kiki.
Chair, may we just put police presence instead of on foot? Because even if the police are there within their vehicle, that police presence really helps. Someone can run to that police vehicle. Maybe, maybe if HPD is is really stretched, they can at least send their officers who are writing their reports to park in the parking lot, do their reports, so at least that presence is there. They may not be able to give on foot, and that may be right off the bat, oh, we can't do this. But police presence, that, you know, they might read that and say, oh, we can do that.
Chair, I recognize that that's a reasonable request, given the commentary. Is there any objection for the move on and the second to actually amend the motion as such? From on foot to police presence? Because we're going to take what we can get. Seeing that there's no objections, so the motions before us against is requesting HPD for police presence at the Kapolei Regional Park during operating hours and request that HPD investigate the allegations of threats of violence against our Kiki. And noting that until the violence is resolved, that they're requested to continue their police presence. Okay. Hey. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Hearing none, the Chair calls it unanimous. Okay? So we'll get that request off to HPD. And the Chair also begs, again, as citizens in our community, if you've seen something, if you video something, providing evidence so that HPD can actually prosecute, I mean, sorry, arrest, so that we can prosecute or get them into health services, that'll be greatly appreciated, because part of the issue that they have is that there's not enough evidence for them to take action. So, so please come forward if you do have that and directly report it to Corporal Pagan or the HPD, or if you need us to intermediary, please come see me after the meeting, or everybody has my phone number and email, 883982468 and mcconnell.parris@gmail.com. So hit me up. Okay. With that, any other community concerns or announcements? Hey, come on up, community member Sheila Maderas. Mahalo.
Can you hear me? Great news. We have established a food bank drive at Kapolei High School. It'll be every second Saturday, starting in October, so October twelve. We'll start with the food bank there, probably up until December, and then move to Honu Uli Uli Middle School. But there has been a gap with the Hawaii Food Bank Drive being in Kapolei. I think we were the only city on the west side that stopped having the food drive, and so we identified the gap, and so it's being filled. But we do need volunteers. So if anyone is interested in volunteering to feed our needy, it's tough times right now, and believe it or not, there are long lines waiting for support. So if you feel the desire to come out, we start, it'll be from seven to eight AM in the morning. We're going to open up at five. The food truck will deliver around six in the morning, and that's when we offload. So I will be sending out a whole bunch of information, a reminder, volunteer signups for this event. Also, I did contact James Campbell, the State Office, because apparently there's some confusion on the fence line on what goes up on there. So Peter is the person at the James Campbell office that approves what signs are on allowed on that fence. So right now, political signs are not allowed. So they're all campaign signs for political office needs to come down. The only thing that is allowed are events. So events like the Food Bank Drive, Ma Keke. Apparently, people had issues with Ma Keke's banner on there. But I did get clarification from Peter. If you have any questions, he said, call him. But it is for events, as long as you take your sign down after the event and doesn't stay up. So for our food bank, we will put our banner up on that fence line one week prior, and then after we'll take it down, and we'll do that every month. So if you have an event, you are allowed to put your sign up on that fence line. Just no political signs. And thank you very much.
One question. Which fence line, what road, what area?
When you're coming off the exit, Makakilo exit, that big sign that normally has, you know, it used to have a whole bunch of events on there. In fact, Ma Keke had a beautiful banner. Yeah, yeah. And and so I don't know what the problem was, but there was a whole lot of people complaining about the event signs. But it is meant to have event signs on that fence line. Just no political signs.
Mahalo. Thank you so much for the clarification. Okay. Any other community announcements? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Leslie Keating, and I'm coming in behalf of the Kapolei Band Boosters for two different things. Tomorrow, if you don't have high school kids, you might not know, is the homecoming parade. So if you're on the road between three thirty and probably about four thirty, Kapolei Parkway will be closed from the high school to Kamakana. So avoid that area unless you're going for the parade. And then the second thing is, I wanted to announce that we'll be having the Kapolei High School Band Festival, October twenty-sixth, which is a Saturday. It is during the day, but we do have like eleven schools coming. It's over six hundred kids that are doing marching band performances. Our school's kind of a mid-range one, but there's some fancy high schools that come, Mililani and some of the bigger ones too, which are kind of exciting to watch, because they actually go to national competitions. So if you're interested in that, we'd love to see all of the community members there to support the students. And if anybody's interested in volunteering, we're always looking for volunteers or sponsors. So.
Mahalo, thank you. Any other community members wishing to do announcement, raise a concern?
I got a concern.
Yes, go right ahead.
This is Darren Holbrook again with NSW. So as we do our walks throughout the villages of Kapolei, we notice a lot of unregistered vehicles and expired safety inspections. We can't get much done about it. For example, I got a truck in my neighborhood that the registration on their license plates expired in twenty nineteen. So we call the emergency nine one one line, we do the abandoned vehicle line, we call the three one one app, and it's still sitting there six months later. This is in every neighborhood. Every time we do a walk, we can find at least ten vehicles. This just leads to bigger problems, stolen cars, people living in cars. And it's not going to get any better. And the the biggest issue is village of Kapolei roads are supposedly still private roads. And depending on what officer you talk to, they won't do anything about it. But yet we still pay property taxes, and we don't get the service as other roads get. So it's a bigger issue, but it's causing more problems in the community.
Thank you. Community member Darren, I believe you're speaking about the villages of Kapolei and the road situation being under HCD, I'm sorry, HFFDC's control. So we can look into that with the Governor's Office and with the Mayor's Office to see what we can do to make sure that those vehicles that are abandoned can be appropriately cited or towed. Thank you for raising the concern. Okay. Any other community members wishing to provide concerns at this time? Seeing none. We are at nine forty, and I will hold all of my announcements to next time. Okay, now let's get to some fun things. Board business. Approval and summaries for video record Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and Wednesday, August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Chair recommends that we approve them.
So moved.
It's been moved by First Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second. Second by Board Member Singleton. Any discussion? Anyone wishing to testify to say whether or not we spelled your name incorrectly on one of the minutes? Hearing no discussion or any testimony, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Chair calls it unanimous. Okay? Now let's get to some innovative things. Establishing a permitted interactive, a permitted interaction group on any of the following matters consisting of Chairs of the Neighborhood Board number twenty-three and thirty-four and two or more members, less than quorum appointed by each Board, recommendations presented at a joint meeting of both Boards to handle regional issues, including Kalailoa Community Development District overcrowding in public schools within the boundaries of Neighborhood Board twenty-three and thirty-four, additional traffic congestion related to new developments in the pipeline and community disaster resiliency hubs. Now, for some context, this was brought to our attention, mostly because the Eva Neighborhood Board asked a resolution saying they wanted pickleball courts in Kalailoa. And we're like, yeah, that makes sense. But then we started talking, and we're like, there's regional issues that face both of our boards. We're like seriously next to each other. And so the question becomes, how do we do this without violating the sunshine law? And the recommended pathway forward is to set up permitted interaction groups where name members from Eva's Board and any volunteers from tonight for all four categories. And then we'll set them free to be able to talk about these regional issues, come up with recommendations to both Boards, and then take positions on them at our joint meeting, which will be in the regular block that either one of us has, so that we have it on O'Lealoo. So so is there any questions on what we're trying to do? Setting up permitted interaction groups to handle regional issues that affects both of our Boards? Okay, so the Chair of Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-three Eva has given us a list of those that wish to participate in the permitted interaction group for the various areas on the agenda. And while I'm pulling that up, I am going to ask or request from Board members here which area they would like to sit on. And all this means is that we will be able to talk to each other offline and do the work without agendizing, without actually having to have a meeting in person. We'll be able to talk to our colleagues from Eva and ourselves about these regional issues, and then we'll present it wherever recommendations to joint boards. So please take a moment to look over those fellow board members. And at this time, I would like to facilitate us being timely. So if I can have a motion to establish all four PIGs with people's names to be determined. Can I have that motion? It's been moved by Second Vice Chair, Dr. Kiyani Dudley, and secondly by Board Member Moon Kahle. And we're going to expedite this while they're thinking which ones they're going to volunteer for. I'm inviting anybody from the community to testify on this, because you're supposed to be given the opportunity to testify. Anybody don't want us to talk about regional issues without being in the meeting where you have to sit at to craft a resolution of a page or more with everybody in the same room? Okay, hearing no one coming up to testify, we're going to keep it open. And now to facilitate it better, I will ask Board Members Michaela Lindstone if there's anyone she's particularly wishing to serve on.
Chair, I think I need more time to to think on this. I mean, does any, does any Board Member? I, just a question, who who runs the meeting? Does the minutes, there's no minutes, okay.
All this is, this is to be here. All this is to allow us to talk to each other without violating the sunshine law, because right now I can't talk to you about Kalailoa issues and then talk to him and then talk to him, because now we're breaking the law. So the only time we can talk is now in front of everybody. So all this is, is allowing Board Members to talk to each other. There's no minutes. There's no agenda setting. It allows us to talk about the regional issues with people that are interested and any recommendations that come out, potentially resolutions, but that will be worked on on the individual basis of whoever wants to put them together, given the group's mana.
Chair, I think this is a great idea. I just think we need more time to decide which which group we would want to commit to, because we would want to commit and follow through on that commitment. I know I need more time. I don't know if anyone else does.
So all the Board Members need more time? Okay, so I've been advised that we can establish the the permitted interacting groups now, and then when you figure out which one you want to be a part of, then you can tell me, and then we will do it at the next meeting and set it up. Yeah, no problem. And just know that you can't talk to each other, but you can all talk to me. Okay, awesome. That sounds great, and we do have the list from Eva, because they're ready to go. So we will wait on that for our naming. Okay. Is there any further discussion to establish these PIGs, and the members will be determined at the next meeting? Or it could be determined at the Eva Board Meeting if we get our act together, and because they have their meeting before hours, and we just tell them. So either way. Okay, all those in favor of setting up these four permitted interaction groups at this time, members to determine at the next meeting, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Hearing none. Okay. The Chair calls it unanimous. The PIGs are set up in concept. We do have the lists from the Eva Neighborhood Board, but I will take that over to a next board meeting if they do not establish the PIGs with us at their next board meeting. Okay, awesome. Okay, great. Now we have a resolution before us. The resolution is entitled Supporting Quality of Life and Sustainable Design Elements in Multifamily Housing Developments That Respect Local Values and Our Place Base. For context, our Board and community has been talking about development and for the last four years. And we have thousands of homes coming in. And from all of the presentations and past experiences, we've come up with a list and of things that we want every new development to consider. We're not saying they have to have them, but we want them to consider how to increase these things because they were talked about by our community members for a period of time. So we're standardizing the lists so that we don't have to repeat ourselves. Moving forward, we can just show them the list of seventeen elements that we have come to us us a consensus on as a community members by formally adopting this. Now, let's show the result if we can, and I will read them off so that everybody here can hear. And then we will offer testimony. So whereas abbreviated, we're the Board, and whereas Hawaii is experiencing a housing crisis, and whereas the Neighborhood Board District is set to experience the development of thousands of new multifamily housing units in the near future, whereas our Neighborhood Board District is committed to playing an active role in advancing the Hawaii twenty fifty Sustainability Plan, which provides essential guidance for coordinating and implementing sustainability and climate adaptation goals, principles, and policies in accordance with Hawaii Revised Statues twenty twenty-six sixty-five. And whereas Quality of Life Design Elements in Multifamily Housing Developments should enhance the well-being of families by maximizing natural light and ventilation, incorporating outdoor spaces, utilizing green landscaping, providing community amenities, implementing safety features, ensuring accessibility for all individuals, allowing flexibility in unit design, promoting transportation options, creating social spaces for community interaction, and leveraging design elements to generate wealth for residents and their associations while reducing maintenance fees. Whereas Sustainable Design Elements in Multifamily Housing Developments encompasses energy efficiency, renewable energy integration, water conservation, the use of eco-friendly materials, efficient waste management. the use of eco-friendly materials, efficient waste management, green landscaping, smart technology for resource optimization, transportation options, indoor air quality enhancement, and effective stormwater management, all contributing to sustainable, resilient, and healthy living environments for residents. And whereas the integration of local values, the development design fosters community identity, enhances social cohesion, ensures the multifamily housing reflects the unique cultural, historical, and environmental characteristics of the area, ultimately leading to a more sustainable and resilient neighborhoods. Whereas place-based development design prioritizes the specific context and characteristics of a community, ensuring that housing solutions are not only functional and aesthetically pleasing, but also harmoniously integrated with surrounding environment, culture, and social fabric, thereby enhancing the overall quality of life for residents. Now resolved that the following design elements be recommended for consideration in multifamily housing developments. And these are all of the things that we've talked about and comes to our level of consensus. One, edible and native landscaping. Incorporate edible plants and native species to promote biodiversity, reduce water usage, and provide residents with opportunities for gardening and food production. We have a resolution on that, naming all of the native plants that are both food-producing and from these places so they don't take much water because they're used to living here. Two, community garden spaces. Allocate areas for community gardens, encourage residents' engagement, local food production, and ecological education. Three, vertical landscaping. Integrating green walls, vertical gardens, rooftop gardens to improve air quality and aesthetics, manage stormwater, and enhance communal spaces. Four, passive cooling techniques. Board Member Tiadetala brings it up all the time. Utilizing architectural designs and enhanced natural ventilation and shade to reduce reliance on mechanical cooling systems promoting energy efficiencies. Wind towers. Like jealousies, trade wind introduction, like all of these things are passing cooling techniques, plants. Reinforce structures. Implement or and painting buildings white. Okay, reinforce structures. Implement construction techniques that ensure buildings can withstand extreme weathers, events, including category-five hurricanes, enhancing safety and durability. Dr. Kiony Dudley, making sure we can survive the disasters coming. Community centers add a disaster hub. Designate community centers or common areas equipped to serve as disaster response centers, ensuring residents have a safe gathering space during emergencies. Because there's no other place right now like for category-five, four, or three hurricanes in our region. Water catchment systems. Integrate rainwater harvesting systems to collect and reuse stormwater, reducing demands on mutual water supplies. Malamaikauai gray water piping and water reclamation include gray water systems, recycle water from sinks and showers for irrigation and other non-plottable uses in all of the areas that they're doing landscaping. Gray water piping and water reclamation did that. Microgrid, community solar, and micro windmills. Implement onsite renewable energy solutions, including solar panels and small wind turbines, especially over parking lots and on rooftops, promote energy independence and sustainability. Ten, electrical vehicle-ready stalls planned for EV chain charging stations in parking areas to support transition to electronic vehicles and promote eco-friendly transportation. Eleven, underground parking solutions. Incorporate underground parking to enhance land use efficiency, reduce surface level in per impervious areas and create disaster-safe haven, someplace for go when it's really, really bad. Um, twelve, kupuna and keke daycare. Incorporate dedicated kupuna and keke daycare and traditional housing facilities to support intergenerational living and enhance family well-being and provide accessible care services for both elders and children within the multifamily housing development. Thirteen, bicycle, e-bike, mopet, and motorcycle storage areas. Provide dedicated storage facilities for alternate transportation modes to promote environmentally friendly commuting options. Fourteen, surfboard, longboard, storage areas, especially if you're in an eighth-floor building and like carry them all the way up and don't fit in the elevator. Include specialized storage areas for recreational equipment, enhancing appeal for residents and promoting community-oriented lifestyle. Fifteen, onsite temporary storage facilities. Design spaces for temporary storage to assist residents during moving and maintenance, enhancing convenience and minimizing disruptions. So you know, you can move it to the onsite storage when you have to bomb your house with humans, humiliation. Onsite temporary storage facility. Okay, Hawaiian names. Consult with area Hawaiian cultural practitioners if choosing Olelo Hawaii Hawaiian language names for use in the project. And seventeen, art and decor. Incorporate local artists for all art and decor installations in the project. And be it resolved that the board um supports the use of quality of life and sustainable design elements in multifamily housing developments that respect local values and our place space and be it ordered that this get distributed to the named parties. Okay, so at this time, uh, is there a motion to adopt our qualification of mana'o to multifamily housing developments? It's been moved by Board Member Matthew Khan. Is there a second? Second by Board Member Michael Singleton. And now open up for testimony. Good. We've been talking about this stuff for four years. We're just putting it in one place so that we can just give it to the people that's coming over here when they're saying, yeah, yeah, we're listening to you, we're hearing you in the development. And now we can point to the thing and be like, did you address all seventeen of these? And please uh put that in your updated presentation. Okay, hearing no one coming, one going twice, going three times. Public testimony is now closed. Any discussion from the board before we take this action? Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair Dr. Kiony Dudley.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I I don't know when people got copies of this, but I haven't seen it myself. And I found your reading uh not be something I could really understand everything. I would like to have more time to look this over um and try to maybe make some suggestions and uh I would like to have us hold off the vote until next meeting.
Great. Um, the request is noted, and it's not a problem to push this off again. Um, it will give the community and board members more time to see if we miss anything of the list of seventeen and you want to add or reword. Um, so the the request is reasonable. I think, uh, so long as the move on and the second wishes to withdraw. If not, we're going to have to take a vote. You guys withdraw, or you guys want to go forward, or you want to give uh more time? Yeah, we just wait till the next meeting. Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn, and um the resolution was distributed uh last week. Um, it's been available on our cloud drive. And anyone wishing to comment and testify on this uh at the next board meeting, please go to our cloud drive to check it out and bring your suggestions, because this is our dream list to all of the new developments that are coming. Okay, with that, um, we will defer that to the next meeting. Chair recognizes we do have two minutes uh remaining. We do have committee reports that we have deferred, so I will pick up the committee reports uh at this time if you guys want to make your reports. Okay, Parks and Recreation has deferred. Transportation Committee is not here. Environmental Justice Committee defers. Okay, so with our last remaining minutes, um, we can go to Federal State Monthly Reports and welcome up Senator Crabbe, um, the Governor's Representative, um, Representative Diamond Garcia, and anyone else online that would like to um make comments on and talk story with us. Yeah.
Hello, Chair. Members of the board, Senator Crossmithany Crabbe here. Um, we completed our first month of serving in office, um, you know, since getting appointed in July. Um, I did bring my September newsletter. Feel free to um read it if you folks want to. Um, I passed it out to you folks, but the community wants, we have extras as well. Um, no further updates. Mahalo.
Yeah, mahalo. Thank you so much. Governor's Office.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chairs, uh, Board Members, and fellow West Oahu residents. Um, Gordon Pang, State of Hawaii. Uh, just wanted to say that the resolutions that you folks passed related to uh development and housing. Um, and your concerns, I will take back to HHFDC. Um, I would suggest that you folks also uh email that along to HCDA, DHHL, as well as uh who am I missing? Uh, HPA, Hawaii Public Housing Authority, and of course, all the uh various planning agencies in the city as well. Um. Let's see. Oh, Villages of Kapolei Association folks who have issues uh with uh illegally parked vehicles and and the like should contact Kiola Jimenez. Uh, he is HHFDC's board member to um the Voka Board. Uh, I typed in his info in the chat. Or email me, gordon.pang@hawaii.gov, and I'll make sure that message gets passed along. Um, finally, uh, just something completely off the wall and different. Did you folks know that? And of course, my my power went out just as I got there. Um, we have koki frogs uh now in Kuli'oo. Uh, they're coming down the mountain very slowly, but everyone, please be aware of them, that they are coming. Um, the Department of Agriculture has uh established a program um to spray them uh without harming the environment or or humans. So contact them as well. So thank you. That's all I have. Please let me know if you folks have questions, and of course, always email me. I'm available to everyone here as well as to the public. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you, Uncle Gordon from the Office of the Governor. We really appreciate especially your recommendations on who to send our housing wish lists to. Um, Representative Garcia, would you like to say a few words before we end?
Pull myself back, but just an update. I did pass out my newsletter. Just one major update is our town hall meeting last night. Thank you, Board Member Lindstone, for being there. Major issue in our area is the realization of structural and foundational issues amongst our homestead residents and Voka residents. Um, Uncle Shad Kani was there last night to share the reality of the type of land that is beneath us here in the Honuuli Uli Apua. So please uh read that that portion in our newsletter. Other than that, have a great evening. God bless you all. Aloha.
Mahalo. Thank you, everyone. And the final announcement of the evening is the Makakilo Kapolei Honukai Hall and Neighborhood Board number thirty-four's next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four at seven PM. And if there's no objection from the board, we will now be in adjournment. Okay. Mahalo Nui Loa. We are adjourned at ten oh three. Thank you for staying here, and we appreciate all of your support. Keep up the good work, community. Aloha.